All right. Think we're good to go? Any echoes? Not hearing any. All right. With that, I will call this meeting to order. Welcome to the District of Squamish's Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 14th. My name is Councillor Jenna Stoner as Acting Mayor this month. I'll be chairing this meeting. Hot Squamish, welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting. Robin Arthur is over here to the right. Or my right, I guess. I'd also like to recognize that just before this meeting started, we did raise the transgender flag above City Hall. It is Transgender Week of Awareness. And Catherine Truman from Cedar Sky Allies, thank you, I was going to say Squamish Pride, Cedar Sky Allies. I spoke really eloquently and had a call to action for our community in terms of really showing up and speaking truth to power in terms of starting to see more misinformation and more unfortunate actions of hate and violence against folks who are transgendered queer or of the 2S LGBTQI community. And so I just wanted to speak to that a little bit again and call on our community to really recognize the importance of making sure that we have a community where everybody belongs, where everybody feels safe. With that, I will ask council colleagues for a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Mayor Hereford, seconded by Councillor Hamilton. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this afternoon, everybody, is a delegation from the Vehicle Residents of Squamish. And we have Thomasina Pidgen here to speak to us. We'll have 10 minutes for the presentation and any questions to Thomasina. And then we'll have about 20 minutes discussion amongst council members to figure out where we want to go from here. So we'll just give them a minute to set up and then we'll pass it over to you. You think Russell will bring up your presentation? Oh, yeah, Russell will bring up your presentation for you, so no need to touch anything. You're good. You do need to turn the microphone on and you'll be able to advance the slides on your own.
Like with this? Yeah. Okay. All right. Hi, I'm Thomasina Pidgen. I'm a member of the Vehicle Residents of Squamish. We formed in 2019 in response to the bylaw, which forbids people from sleeping in their vehicles on public land. And just for the record, we have worked with the district before, which Rufio will speak to, but the bylaw impacts me very closely. I live in my vehicle and have so for a long time, 25 years, as have many of the people in this audience. And I returned to school specifically for the bylaw. I just finished my degree in political science last year for the bylaw to learn how to better fight it, basically. And I'm currently doing my masters in geography, which specializes in property law and the bylaw.
And I'm Rufio West, one of the co-founders of the VRS as well. I was involved until a couple of years ago where I took a step back because working with this district actually led to a lot of burnout for me. But I'm happy to be here today to hopefully move forward.
Okay, so to start, we're just going to talk really quickly about what drives the bylaw. So the District of Squamish has garbage, complaints, and health and safety concerns. However, the vehicle residents, as well as this is supported by research. So just for the record, everything in this slideshow, I do have references for. That is documented with academic research that I can provide at the end. So basically stigma, othering, nimbyism, which is basically not in my backyard. Some examples of stigma are on this website, which we found on Squamish Facebook pages, as well as in district documents. Some of the people in this room have used these words, just for the record. So it's something that we, stigma is very important to be aware about and to address because it is a driver of the bylaw. As well, also lack of facilities, toilets, garbage cans, which we're all familiar with, lack of affordable housing and shelter space, lack of affordable campgrounds. And actually, just so you know, there is a guy here from the campground who is willing to speak later. Gentrification in real estate, which is one thing that does not get addressed, but that is definitely a driver of the marginalization of lower income people as well. And settlement bias. So this is academic term, but it basically means legally and culturally, vehicles are considered an inappropriate form of housing. It comes from colonial property law. It deems vehicle residents homeless and therefore they're criminalized in attempt to keep social control. It basically protects one way of living at the expense of another in terms of property owners and non-property owners. So ventilators or precariously housed. This is something that Mayor Elliott, former Mayor Elliott, has definitely said. So we try to be careful to using this binary view because it can fail to address the importance of vehicles as housing, as well as the property rights, the human rights, and also the infrastructure needs that vehicle residents need. And the public, I mean, we all need more garbage and toilets. So what is, why do people live in vehicles? There's a bunch of different reasons. This list is not full, but it's a housing alternative. It's an affordable housing solution. It's a culture. It's a minimalist life, as we're familiar with in Squamish especially. It's a semi, has semi-nematic benefits. It's a retirement life. There's a lot of RVs as well. It's a redefinition of homeless. So a lot of homeless people actually prefer vehicles to the shelter because they find them more private, they're safer, they can have their belongings with them, as well as their family. It's a result of housing insecurity, rent evictions, not wanting to live with a thousand roommates, in affordability. It's also can be domestic violence, women fleeing from something, moving into their vehicles. And moreover, vehicles just offer a choice, autonomy, and control over the living situation economically, physically, and socially. So I think the basis of this whole idea is like, what is a home? I think that's something that the vehicle, it gets discussed a lot. Like it's deemed an inappropriate form of housing, but a home goes beyond a fixed wall. It's a place where one can create feelings of exclusion or belonging. And it's, yeah, it's a community. I mean, it's, I belong to Squamish, I live in Squamish, this is my community, and I want to feel like I legally belong here like everyone else. And this is interesting fact, 35% of vehicle residents actually consider their vehicles home, which contests the social construction of homelessness, as well as the settlement bias, which I talked about earlier. And in order to address all these things, we need solutions. But in order to have a solution, we need to rethink property, basically, and kind of challenge kind of more dominant narratives that we hear in society. And for the solutions. So this is, we want to focus most of our attention here. But a permit system, which we've been, we've had proposed before, it legally allows people to sleep in their vehicles on public and private land. Because vehicle residents are a diverse group of individuals, we need inclusive policies for everybody, short and long term. To get a permit, you would require to pass Leave No Trace certification and follow a code of conduct. You'd have to relocate every two, three days. You would pay the equivalent of a property tax, which kind of addresses the idea that we are tax evaders. You would get a sticker, kind of like a park pass or a permit pass. It would be for tourists and locals alike, because tourists are definitely impacted by the bylaw and as well as the shortage of campgrounds. One month minimum, just to kind of make better profit. Encompasses safe lots, which we'll talk about shortly. And it saves on punitive enforcement, as well as its income for the district. So it's also aligned with the outdoor culture of Squamish, which I kind of flew past. So a safe lot, there's a lot of examples of safe lots in the States. It's for those who want more stability and community and access to resources. Basically, vehicles could park on vacant or public, underutilized public and private land. It connects them to the community, to resources, social services and such. It's cheaper than affordable housing. It operates at little to no cost to cities. It eases community tension because it legitimizes that we too belong here. And it manages seasonal pressure because it would provide garbage cans and such. There are criteria, like you would have to have a licensed motor vehicle. It has to be driving and abide by Leave No Trace. And an example is from Eugene. It costs the city $90,000 a year for their various safe lots, but they saved $300,000 a year in policing, like due to the decrease in police calls, as well as bylaw specifically for campers. Possible locations, the bluffs, the adventure parking lot, the Brendan Park, Dog Park, former recycling. We think that all of these locations, and there's obviously more, would help address the tensions in the community, the perceptions that were freeloaders, and minimize problematic practices like garbage. Budget considerations, a permit sticker would cost roughly two bucks. Signage for Leave No Trace signage. Information pamphlets, which are similar to the no camping pamphlets that already exist. Infrastructure to pay could happen online. That's how a lot of the ones in the States work, as well as through municipal hall. Additional porta potties a week. Two units, 300 bucks a week. I'm not sure if that's completely accurate, it came from someone else. Compost, recycling, waste bins, which I guess house people pay 400 bucks a year. So I don't, and I actually don't know how much this would cost for the city in a location in the city. But these items would be offset by the income from permits and safe lots. So why the vehicle, why it needs changing? So studies show that vehicle residency is only increasing. Anti-vehicle residency laws are also increasing as a result. The 2023 Squamish on-house count counted 56% of our on-house population actually live in vehicles. And this is vastly undercounted, and as well, people, counting people in vehicles is difficult. The bylaw perpetuates and legitimates the stigma and segregation that is voiced against vehicle residents. And we've had some violent encounters this summer, which I'm sure some of you are aware about. The district between 2019 and 21 has received over 300 letters of support for a permit system, as well as against the bylaw. So we have support in the community. And there's also a housed resident here in the audience to show that. Bylaw is expensive. It's 135 to 150 a year, just in 2021, for the specific camper bylaw. Courts say that these bylaws, these, the anti-vehicle residency laws, they're overbroad, vague, exclusionary, prone to arbitrary discriminatory, and have a hugely disproportionate impact on vehicle residents, which we can contest to. And moreover, it may raise constitutional challenges, which would be better avoided. Studies show that vehicle resident bylaws are ineffective and they're exclusionary. They do not reduce vehicle residency. They do not address the health and safety concerns. They perpetuate the cycle of criminality, poverty, and homelessness, especially for those less fortunate. They diminish, due to diminishing legal spaces, that pushes the problem elsewhere. And displacement tactics are often, it's termed a violent form of unhoming, which we can all account for. Having a bylaw officer wake you up, shine his light in your car while you're sleeping can really have physical effects, and it's very stressful, which is why I'm in school. So I can just account for like how impactful it is. It pushes people further, further from the community. It's against the will and it underwrites their right to dwell. Ways to change the bylaw, pretty simple, low cost, changing a few words, removing certain phrases, adding amendments that allow for safe parking, removing the language that blocks creative solutions, such as a permit system. It takes political courage, which I believe, I have to believe in. It costs a little money and it saves money on enforcement. And also prevents money, it prevents economic problems for those vehicle residents who really can't afford to have a ticket. It legally destigmatizes them and allows them to sleep like housed residents, free of police harassment. We should include us, why should you include us in inclusive policy? It's in line with the B.C. Human Rights Code. It would be in line with the Canadian Charter. It's in line with the District of Squamish values, which we went over in that open letter. It addresses the worker shortage, seasonal and long-term. It helps with the housing crisis. It saves Squamish's reputation. Squamish's reputation in terms of campers is very negative at the moment, just so you know. And there's benefits. It's inclusive, it's diverse, it's progressive. It's, to me, it's a, it's a win-win. And moreover, we matter, like vehicles residents matter. We're members of this community. We don't deserve to be treated like we do. And we really think that we belong to and we should be legally allowed to belong. These are just best practices that we kind of gave to vehicle residents throughout the summer. Armand is familiar with them. And some links to permit systems and safe lots in other parts of the world and resources. So that concludes that. That's it. Thank you. Oh, I think there's a thank you slide. There's a thank you slide. Oh, no, there isn't. There was, I erased it by accident. Yeah, but there, oh, no, it's right there. It says, thank you.
That's all good. Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Pidgen. I'll just go to council and see if there's any questions at this time for Thomasina or Rufio that we can have them address. And then we'll ask them to step back to the audience and we can have a discussion amongst council once we have clarify, any clarifying questions cleared. So go to Councillor French first.
Thanks, Chair. There was a reference to LNT certification. I'm not familiar with that, so I'm wondering if you could explain what that is.
Yeah, that's Leave No Trace. Leave No Trace guidelines. There's actually online training for it that's free online. All you have to do is fill out the quiz. And then in my imagination, you would fill out the quiz, you bring your certification to the district office, and here's my thing, here's my money for my permit sticker. And it's, Leave No Trace is kind of international. It's, yeah.
And you, there are different organizations that became, can become partners with the Leave No Trace program. So the District of Squamish or the VRS, or both, could become a partner of LNT.
Okay, and the presentation also made reference to some sort of system where property tax could be paid. And there was a percentage. Wondering how that long string of number percentage was arrived at?
That was actually, came from one of our other directors who's not here, but it came from the website. I'd have to ask him.
Okay. And final question. The, in the presentation, there was reference to $2 for a permit sticker. Would that be a one-time $2 fee and you get a lifetime sticker or a month per quarter, per year?
I think it would basically, if you're, if you have a one-month permit, it would be a one-time, it would be for that month. But the permit would, yeah, I mean, if you're buying multiple, then you would have more stickers.
Sorry, I think where your question's coming from is that that was the cost of printing a sticker. The, the actual permit cost would be different.
That's a helpful clarification. Thank you. Councillor Greenlaw and then Mayor Hereford.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. It was, it's very enlightening. I was just wondering if you had an estimate of how many vehicle residents currently reside in Squamish?
Our last count was in 2020 and it was roughly about 300. But I mean, the studies show that vehicle residents are very hard to count because they try to do, they do live a life of hiding to evade bylaw and to evade being punished for being homeless. So it's hard to count them. They're moving, they're always changing locations. But yeah, the current homeless count, we tried to get people to respond and call in, but not everyone did. And it was only within like one day, so it's, it's not inclusive. But I would estimate, I mean, I have a lot of members of my gym that are living vehicles and it's, it's, I would estimate 200 to 300 people that are actual, it's, but that's under, I'm assuming that's underestimating.
And the numbers vary through the year, as you're, I'm sure you're aware. It's a very seasonal town. But a lot of those folks who are in, in the summer, many of them are tourists, but many of them are also people who consider Squamish home. So there's a lot of workers. There's a member of the audience here today who said their partner worked with some rope access groups that are based in Squamish. And there were dozens of people living in their vehicles here in Squamish that are based here with companies. So the number, while in the hundreds, in the summertime, it's even more hidden because a lot of people see them as tourists when they are, there are actually a lot of residents there too.
Any further questions, Councillor Greenlaw?
Yeah, I guess I have one more. So, I mean, I don't want you to give anything up, but where are you all then? There's quite a few people staying in private, like the Walmart parking lot, which obviously we've seen this summer is not successful. Okay, I just stayed on the road. I stay on what was formerly Crown Land. It kind of borders private and Crown Land. When I stayed on the private side, the owner came up to me and kicked me out. Well, he actually didn't kick me out, he let me stay for the night and we talked about in the morning, but. So I, I stay around downtown, just it's easier. Cedar has school, she can walk to school. Driving or driving out of town just does not make sense to me, also environmentally. I don't think anyone else would want to say where they stay. But they're all places that are, they're not supposed to be staying, essentially.
Everywhere that we stay is legal, yes.
I stay, I stay in illegal places. Or I stay, like I had surgery this summer, so I had to be very stationary. And I stayed way over time trying to evade the Rangers at the Chief Campground, which, so I was forced to, in order to evade bylaw, I had to go and be illegal somewhere else. And that was the nature of it.
I will add one thing about the campground. I should have bought it. I do have an eviction notice that I got from the campground this summer for overstaying the 14-day max limit. And he works at the campground, he can attest to it. The campground is crazy. It's a survival, like it's a fight to get a spot there. And moreover, we just cannot stay there for more than 14 days per the year. It's the, it's a huge problem.
Mayor Hereford.
Thank you. Thank you for the present, for the presentation. And I'm sorry for my poor coffee drinking skills, it almost took me out earlier. But I was curious, the Colorado Safe Parking Initiative seemed interesting. Is that the, is there sort of, is that the one that is the, you would consider the gold standard if we were to look? I saw you had lots of resources there and I look forward to exploring those. But is there, there one that you hold in the highest regard?
I would say the one that I hold in the highest regard is the permit system because it accommodates, because again, like vehicle residents are very diverse. Not everyone wants to be put in one parking lot and have to stay there. I personally, I really like the freedom of movement. It's one of the reasons why I live in a vehicle. So for me, the permit system is the best because it allows me to move my location regularly, to stay in different areas. But the safe lot, the Colorado Safe Lot System, there's, they actually have quite a few there. There's a bunch in Washington and in California. They're successful, they seem to work really well. They work really well for people that kind of want more of a spot, like more of a place where they can have, they know they can get water, they know there's bathrooms, they can access housing in the future if they need it, they can access work. Like it's more of a, a community hub.
Okay, thank you. And do you see the permit, a permit system and a safe lot system, are those choices? Or is it, or in your mind, is it a yes and, like both, both together? Given that you just said there's sort of like two, two separate sort of categories of folks maybe or interests?
Yeah, I mean, I think they're kind of, they're very related, but the difference would be the safe lot. We actually, on one of the slides, we went through some locations and we were talking about this earlier, that not all of those locations would work for a safe lot because people use the parking lots in the daytime, like Brendan Park. Brendan Park would be a great place for a permit system. So a permit system, you could stay on the road, in the parking lots. You could basically could stay on public and private land. With respect to like, I mean, I think in the original permit system we sent, there was like, you have to stay a certain distance from a house. But I mean, there's people that also have friends that live in vehicles that stay in front of their house. So I think that we need to recognize that too, that people live also in driveways in vehicles in Squamish. Yeah, so the permit system would work in, for example, the smoke bluffs, but a safe lot would not because a safe lot would have more of a permanency to it. So the place that, that would work would be the West Way former recycling unit that is really underutilized. Do you know what I'm talking about? That's, like, that would be a really great kind of safe lot. There's definitely, yeah, does that answer your question?
It does. And you led me into my last question, if it's okay, Chair. I was wondering about the, given the number, say around 300, which does change, I can imagine changes seasonally and the impact, the pressures we do have from tourism in, in, that presents similar with folks coming with vehicles to, for their stays in Squamish. Like that spot that you identified there, I think you said, was it 30 spots or something maybe? Or how many parking spots? But like, how, how big would it, would, do you see a safe lot needing to be, to be actually impactful? And not, and not be another, to avoid some of the challenges you're seeing at sort of the overcapacity of camp sites and overstay challenges? Like, does 20 or 30 mean anything?
Well, actually, so the Colorado one, it's 10 vehicles max for some of them. And, but the thing is that they have many of them. Like some of them just work in community, like church parking lots. Like a lot of them are in church parking lots in Colorado. And, but there's like not just one, so there would be more than one. And I think we would need more than one because we have so many people here, and especially in the summertime. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of empty church parking lots in Squamish and I think they would be a good partner, as well as like just the industrial area that, I mean, there's so many places that are empty at night. Like the smoke block parking lot has a barricade on it to keep vehicle residents out, which to me is kind of insane because there are toilets there. And it just, there's, yeah, it's underutilized or not used at all spaces.
And I think that speaks to the diversity that's required for addressing this issue is because 10 or 20 spots may not make an impact on its own. But when you have more options for more people, then you can appropriately manage the population. So, or manage, not the right word, but.
Councillor Hamilton, go ahead.
Thanks very much and thanks for the great presentation. Vehicle residency, I see it as a very viable form of housing. It's a viable form of housing that, like every form of housing, has potential challenges. And some of the potential challenges, just that I'm, that we've seen come up, one of them is in, as you pointed out, day and night use. There's a lot of, I could see an argument for vehicle residency where you need a spot to park at night. Versus a spot to park and then, at night, and then sort of live during the day. If a solution were to be found where only nighttime parking was allowed, would that be a sufficient solution or is that an insufficient solution?
I think it comes back to who the vehicle residents are because we are so diverse. I know some, if we speak of the more marginalized people, that maybe their vehicles are not running or they just cannot afford gas to drive everywhere. I think that there definitely needs to be an opening for them so that they can have more access to services and support. That said, I think that what, like a nighttime proposal would be, I mean, for me, that would work because I just go to an area and I sleep and usually I wake up and I go back to work, like most, like most vehicle residents. But we're, it's a diverse group. So I think that solutions need to be really creative to help accommodate the people that may even need more help.
And I think you've highlighted what I see, if I, if I may, highlighted what I see is another big, one of the challenges is the diversity. It's a, it's a very diverse group of folks. And one solution to meet all their needs may not, may not be immediately viable or may take a long time to implement, as opposed to solutions that can accommodate some of the needs of the residents, whereas those needing more support may, may need another solution. So I, I'm, right now, I'm torn to understand a solution that meets the broad diversity of needs that you're, that you're putting forward.
Yeah, the, the safe lots would, the safe lots would definitely help with the people that need more support. They're very, I mean, as the demonstration said, they're, they're really cheap. They have low, they're very low cost. They're mostly run by volunteers, church organizations and such. And in Colorado specifically, they definitely help address the people that have, are having, are having like, just like low wages or just can't find affordable housing. The permit system is inclusive to everything, so.
And I'm not too sure for the newer council members, whether they're aware that there was a consultant hired specifically by the District of Squamish and that was working with us, as well as other community members to work on a program. And we had heard some of, some of the ideas that he had that were unique to us. There, some of them seem more in line of what's been implemented in the States more recently, about having a community hub and more social resources. However, his work was discontinued, I believe, two and a half years ago. And so I'm not too sure what the last piece of his work that was made available to the district was.
Yeah, just on that, that work was never completed.
Yeah, uh just on that, that work was never completed, um and even previous council never saw it, so um that's yeah, the the work was never completed. Um I'm not sure why, but there just isn't a follow through on that. Um I did have just a few questions of my own. Um the majority of the safe lot programs or all the safe lot programs that you did link to in your resources, none of them are within Canada. Can you provide any examples of any that are in Canada or in VC?
There's none in Canada. No, yeah, no, the Canmore one uh failed. They uh it's basically due to nimbyism, not my backyard attitude. Which to me is a it's a huge problem, like I think the the bear the biggest barrier here is stigma. And I think that's the one thing that people need to address is the fact that people see vehicle residents as lower than and tax evaders and um also the the camera lot was also in a Safeway parking lot, um not ideal. Like it just wasn't a very good plan in the beginning. The they had security there. It was um, I think it was ten bucks a night, which, I mean, to stay in a safe lot parking lot for ten bucks a night to me is um it's not what it's not going to sell, like it's not going to be, it's not going to help. Um, yeah.
Um and then also, the majority of the programs that you did link to, very few of them are actually run by local governments or by governments at all. Most of them are done maybe in conjunction with the local government, but are run by a third party, a nonprofit, as you mentioned, lots of churches. Um so I'm just wondering if you can clearly identify some of the examples that are not COVID specific that have been run by local governments.
Yeah, there's one in Eugene, one is government run, the one in Vancouver, Washington is uh government run. And the ones in Seattle are kind of a mixture. The ones in Colorado are a mixture, so it's both government and uh local groups.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Uh, Council, we are at time, so are there any further questions for our delegation? Yeah, Councillor Penningill and then Councillor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks. Uh one thing that I struggle with a bit, and I'm just sort of wondering is how big and the question was sort of asked, but I want to ask it in a different question, but how big does this does the program need to be or how big should it be? And I guess one of the tensions is I think a fear when I speak to a number of people who live in their vehicle, um it's not a first choice, it's sort of the the best choice, given the reality of the situation. And and so I guess I have some hesitation or or caution that we um given the limitations of our ability to, like, we can't force a business to provide worker housing and that sort of thing. And so if that just sort of, you know, are we creating a system where the expectation is that all your workforce has to live in vehicles? And we are creating, we are actually increasing the division in the second group of society uh because people are building their business models around the expectation that everyone uh lives in a vehicle. And if we, in theory, constrain the amount of permits or the size of the program so much, does that not force more businesses to come up with models that um support people being in the some housing more than they want like? Uh, how do we work around that sort of tension and and not becoming a this is just employee housing, this is our employee housing solution, we're fine if if every business has all their people in vehicles? Because I don't, I'm not sure that's where anyone's advocating for we go, but we also have an existing situation we have to deal with somehow, so just wondering how we navigate that tension.
Um, well, I don't see it as an employer, I don't see it like that. I don't see it as an employer responsibility and uh the donut shop, they have uh housing for their people. Um yeah, I don't really know how to answer that because I don't see I don't see that as like if if as a business owner myself, like I'm not going to tell my employee that, oh, no, you can't, I can't afford you, you're going to have to go live in a van because I'm not going to, I just, I don't really understand what you what you mean.
Well, I guess I guess i- in theory, if 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 vehicle residency was, and I'm not advocating for this necessarily, but if if it was, you know, we crack down even harder on vehicle residency, so no one could live in a vehicle, does that not force employees to develop uh employment solutions where their employees can actually find housing? Whereas if we make unlimited vehicle residency very easy, what's to stop more and more businesses from building business models that really only function if people live in vehicles? And doesn't that push more people to have to live in a vehicle if they want to live and and work here? And is there a tension there that we have to worry about somehow? And how do we navigate that?
Um, I don't see that tensioned. I don't see that tension, like.
I also feel like there's a lot of businesses here that are sort of forced into that position already. So there's a lot of businesses that know that people will live in vehicles, even though it is completely illegal and it's not stopping it. And so people are doing it anyways, whether it's legal or not, and yeah, that's the reality.
Sorry, we can't have folks talking from the gallery. Um in part because the folks who are online wouldn't be able to hear you. Uh we need microphones. Uh go ahead, Councillor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. Thomasina, you mentioned ten dollars a night was not not viable. So that's like three hundred dollars a month uh to provide um four hundred square feet, five hundred square feet of parking space um plus water and sewer. How much water, sewer and garbage, how much do you think would be a reasonable amount for uh for somebody to have a parking space with water, sewer and garbage service in Squamish?
I mean, currently, all none of the campgrounds have sewer, so it's not necessarily something that is needed. We do live very minimal lives, like I have a toilet in my vehicle. Um so I don't think it should be assumed that we need sewer because there's a lot of places to find water where we fill up our buckets or our bottles, sorry. Um but ten dollars, like I was referring to the Safeway for me, like I think if you want people, if you want to help address the problem of of campers being everywhere, but uh a solution like what they had in Canmore, like staying in the Safeway parking lot for ten dollars a night is not appealing at all. Um if you look to Bishop, California, they have uh it's called the Pit, it's a campground that's on BLM land, so it's on Crown Land. It's two dollars a night. Uh they don't have running water, but you also, again, you don't need it. They have, do you have toilets? Um and they do not have garbage or do they have garbage? Yes, they have garbage. Um it's volunteer run by a climber that kind of stays the whole season. I think that's more reasonable. Um if we look at the campground, the Mamcom one, he originally proposed it as a five dollar campground tonight, and lo and behold, it's twenty bucks a night now. I don't know how it got to that, but that's also not affordable and it's also it's very full. There's no space and they don't have running water.
One more quick question, Councillor Greenlaw, and then we're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay, well, you just piqued my interest. Do you think there would be members within your community who'd be willing to take on that role of being the volunteer kind of steward of an area for a season?
Uh, I think, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Okay, uh, Council, uh not seeing any more hands and looking at the time. Um, we are looking to move on in our agenda, but just wondering if there's anybody who would like to uh move anything in particular from this conversation or we can move receipt. Um, Councillor Greenlaw?
Well, I'm not really sure how to phrase this, but I'd like to uh find out what happened with that consultant. I don't know if we can make make a motion to for staff to get some information from that consultant back. It'd be nice to see what their findings were.
Oh, it's a contract that was multiple years ago that is no longer viable, so we can follow up with staff and see what happened, but I don't think we necessarily need a motion to do that. Um, they can report back to us at some point. I don't know if they want to speak to it right now, but um they can look into it and the staff member who is leading that contract is no longer with us. Um so they can do some due diligence and come back to us on that particular item.
And could they reach out to the to the consultant and get whatever work that they had completed at the time?
Go ahead, Ms. Glenday.
Thank you. At this point, given the contract um no longer exists, what we can do is provide counsel with the information that we had up until the contract ended and provide the history there, if that's what counsel seeks, but no, we don't, we no longer have a working relationship with the consultant.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor Hartford.
Thank you. Um I'd like to refer this topic to the upcoming strategic plan review, which I think is Q one uh twenty twenty four. So we can give it a more fulsome um discussion and have information like Ms. Glenday just, oh, sorry, that I'm trying to stick just to motion to the twenty twenty to the upcoming strategic plan review.
I'll second that.
I'll speak to it.
Go ahead, Mayor Harper.
Thank you. Um I think uh um thank you so much for the present for the presentation today. I think there's some great um ideas in there that that deserve um more consideration. Um I also uh would like to um see how far we got with that consultant and see if there's any um anything uh there and also uh all of these, uh anything we do takes um time, energy, resources, and I think that the appropriate place to have this discussion is when we review our strategic plan. And if we're, and that's where we decide if we're if we're changing direction, if we're adding something, if we're taking something away, where those trade offs are and where that tension um and sort of try to resolve those tension points. So I think that's the uh appropriate next step with this to keep this conversation um moving forward.
Thank you. Uh a secondary, I'll speak to the motion as well. I think that this is uh an appropriate next step in terms of being able to identify uh what we can effectively do. I think uh our presenters today really did speak to the the diversity that exists within this topic, and I don't think that there is a perfect solution. I think that there are multiple solutions on the table. Um I don't think I fully understand the pros and cons to each of them, and I think actually doing our due diligence and making sure we find something that's going to be functional for our community as a whole in the long term takes time. Um I do want to recognize that there are investments in this current twenty twenty four budget in terms of toilets, garbage cans across our community. Um and while I do appreciate the personal comments and the stories that have come forward about some of the physical and online stigma that you folks have experienced, and I don't think that that is something that any of us feel like is appropriate within our community. Um I also want to recognize that our enforcement priority and the policies that we have around the visitor camping and management by law are complaint driven and they are behavioral focused. Um there's policy that outlines that. Um and our staff will be coming forward uh in the next few months with a report on uh the experience that we've had from a staff perspective uh on implementing the the tourism and vehicle uh I always forget the name of it, Miss Latimer, Visitor Management Roundtable. Thank you very much. Um so I think those are all pieces that this group and this the folks around this table need to pull into consideration and be able to have a more informed discussion about how we may actually be able to look at this going forward. So I think referring this to our upcoming strategic plan review is an important piece of the puzzle. And I will go to Councillor Anderson and then Councillor Penningill.
Thank you. I think that the vehicle residents of Squamish have brought some clarity to the discussion, but I think we need even more. And I could point to some elements of the brief and elaborate further, but I think we need to strive for clarity. There's diverse um worlds involved in this topic. Um, there are obvious practical benefits, it would appear, from permitting and the safe lots program. Uh with respect to the links and examples, we would like, I think that we would be interested in more. Uh the examples from Colorado and Vancouver, Washington do have some limitations also for the clientele that they serve, which may not be exactly what we're we're looking at here, maybe, maybe not. Uh finally, on the links to the every man's right in the Nordic countries, my family has generations of experience with that legislation. And I would like to caution that it does not apply to the current discussion. It is not oriented to camping beyond recreational camping, and it is, there's hundreds of years of dialogue on that point. Um the finally, I would have preferred a targeted focused discussion on the matter before us rather than a strategic plan review agenda item. Uh that review might be busy with other broad themes, uh but I will support the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to support this. I think uh in my mind, things have changed um a fair bit since the last time we had these discussions. Um the, you know, the cost of living here or renting or owning was already high, but there's just broad inflation and I think across North America, everything is so much more expensive and uh we are seeing incredible population growth and 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 many things happening, so I I think um it's really worth another look at at where we are uh in post COVID. Um but I I think there is also a fair number of things to consider and look at and dig into, so I believe the strategic plan discussion and figuring out what sort of uh, you know, budgets and and focus, we might want to um assign to that to to do that work um makes sense.
Thank you, Councillor French. Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. I'm speaking in favor of the motion and in doing so, uh want to point out that we recently learned that a new camp facility is proposed for the Porto Porto area, which will bring some relief uh by adding eighty six new campsites to our region, or at least that's what they're proposing at this point. Um and bring our total number of campsites in the region to nearly eight hundred in the Squamish vicinity. And uh while that's happening, a lobby effort continues with the provincial government to potentially bring even more uh provincial sites. Um, the camping management program in place, I believe, is transparent and it provides options. I'm open to a discussion around changes, and if we do bring in changes, I want to make sure that those are made based on data and research. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Greenlaw.
Thanks. Uh I'll be speaking in support of the motion as well, and I'd like to emphasize that I think it's in everyone's best interest that we expedite this conversation. My biggest concern about our current vehicle residency approach or lack thereof is people being treated inequitably in our community. But my next biggest concern is that we have not yet seen the full impact that our inflation rates have had will have on our housing markets. Not only is vehicle residency a viable, affordable housing option, um but it's also part of a solution for the volatility of our housing market. I hear about local engineers now living in their cars because they can't find houses. One of the kids at my school, his grandfather lives in a car. And it's because they just simply do not have access to housing in our community, and I I fear that that the volume of people who will be forced into their vehicles because they want to stay in our community will increase a lot over the next couple of years, po you know, potentially drastically over the next couple of years. Um and even, you know, we've seen some discussion about Bill forty five provincially, putting the onus of um shelters onto municipalities from the province, and I I think that it's it's imperative that we work quickly on this because we need a workable solution moving forward. And what we have right now is simply not workable. Um, yeah, thanks.
All right, I will call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thanks, everybody who joined us in the gallery today. Uh, we'll move on to our next item four one, which is a me uh report on the water metering program with Mr. Morewood. We'll give a minute to get set up. Hey, Mr. Rolston, thanks for joining us. You ready to go there, Mr. Morewood?
I am.
I'll pass it over to you, let you introduce yourself.
Great. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Jesse Morewood. I'm the Capital Projects Manager here at the District. Uh joining me today is Mr. Rolston. Uh he's the Senior Manager of Infrastructure Planning. The recommendation today is that staff complete twenty eight of the remaining forty six water meter installations and defer installation for the remaining eighteen meters. So a quick bit of background, um this started in two thousand and five um when council directed staff to investigate water meter programming in light of low precipitation um in in that current year's um winter season. Uh there were a number of resolutions over the next ten years, uh notably in two thousand and eight um was when residential meter boxes um were um uh required to be installed as part of any new development. Um as and then it culminated in two thousand and fifteen with the water meter um master plan adoption. So the the master plan um laid out the foundation for the water meter implementation and was developed with the primary goals of addressing water supply and consumption concerns, um ensure equitable uh billing amongst ratepayers and prepare for future growth. Um there was also some other specifics, um which included deferral of capital related um upgrades through leakage identification. through leakage identification, consumer demand management. There was also, as I mentioned, equitable basis for utility billing from property to property. And there was also a public health protection by utilizing metering technology equipped with backflow prevention. The resolution that was passed, the Water Master Plan, focused on industrial, commercial, and institutional buildings, ICI for short, and multifamily properties. These were chosen because there's a very large amount of Squamish's water were being used by them, 40%. But it was a relatively small number of buildings, only 10% of the community. These represented 359 properties, which included internal and external meters. For clarification, a single meter has the ability to service many individual commercial or residential units. So for example, think of a residential building that may have 80 residential units in it. The intent was to only install a meter, the intent is to install a meter, just one meter that would service all of those units. So 359 properties actually equates to 300, sorry, 3,200 individual units. So as I mentioned before, there's two main types of meters that we're installing. First of all, there's internal water meters. And this program started in 2019 and also included some external meters. Internal water meters are our preferred water meter to install. The reason being is they're significantly less expensive than the externals. The catch is that you need a mechanical room in order to install them, and there's not mechanical rooms in every buildings, but this certainly is our preferred way to install them. They're also not exposed to the elements, which is, so they last longer. So we're currently just, we're in the last phase of this installation of internal water meters. We have a contractor right now that's just preparing to install a series of more meters. And we intend to have all internal water meters, so all the water meters that can go into building mechanical rooms will be installed by early 2024. The second type is the external water meters. And again, we only install these when we can't do internal water meters. They're effectively a large chamber located somewhere outside of the building. For scale context, if you look at the top of the picture, it's hard to see, but there's a person with a hard hat there. So the chamber is almost as tall as them and certainly much longer than them. And this isn't the largest chambers that we have. There are larger chambers that need to be installed. So there's significant financial outlay to install these. So an update on where we're at, our original, the original 359 properties at the end of this current phase, so the end of early 2024, when we finished all the internal meters, we will have installed 200 meters on 293 properties. And this will have cost us approximately $4.7 million. There are some developers, so through rezoning or through new buildings, some developers have been installing meters, so we haven't had to install those. There are 46 remaining properties that are on our list to be installed. The estimate is $3.8 million for the remaining water meters. So originally, the 2015 Water Master Plan estimated the total cost of installing all the water meters was $3.7 million, so significantly less obviously than the 8.5 million that's currently projected. So there are a few reasons why there has been a, why there's a significant increase. First of all is cost escalation, construction escalation. So materials are more expensive, labor is more expensive, there has been inflation. When we did the original, the original master plan, it was a very high level concept plan. It didn't really drill into the details. And one of the details is internal meters versus external meters. So again, internal meters are much cheaper to install than external meters, and there wasn't really that detail in the original estimate that wasn't done. So now we know there's significantly higher costs. In our current budget, after this current phase that we're doing right now, as I mentioned, the internal, we estimate having $1.35 million left over in 2023 budget. In the current budget for 2024 is 1.75 million. This is $3.1 million total. So I just showed, the previous slide articulated that there was $3.8 million worth of meters to be installed. So we certainly have a shortfall there of approximately $700,000. As I mentioned, this is significantly higher than was originally envisioned. And certainly as the cost of the metering goes up, the cost benefit ratio decreases. So staff took this into consideration about looking at the remaining meters that have to be installed. And as a result of the high cost, we are suggesting that those meters that are $10,000 less are installed and anything above that is not installed. This would result in 28 properties having meters installed and represent 631 units. So by far, the largest majority of the individual units would be metered. The average cost per unit would be about $4,000 and this would cost about $2.5 million. The $2.5 million would obviously be within our budget. Left un-metered or deferred metering would be 18 properties, which represents only 27 units. The majority of those individual properties only have one unit, one business, they're all businesses actually, they're not residential. The average cost of those would be $48,000 to install. And by deferring that, they would save the district approximately $1.3 million. So why have our staff recommending $10,000? We've used our professional judgment, really with the aim is to install the majority of the meters, which was the original intent of this program. But it was also certainly to stay within our budget that's in the existing five year plan. Unfortunately, we don't have a financial breakdown of the cost savings per meter. So when we install a meter, we don't know what the exact costs, cost savings will be. The original plan was really to focus on water consumption rather than savings. And as well, it's very difficult to project because the cost savings or the water reduction will depend on the rates that are determined. And that is going to be done as part of the updated Water Master Plan and brought to council next year. Another point is, is some of the individual meters that we're suggesting deferring are, can be extremely expensive. They generally range from about $20,000 to $100,000 for a single water meter installation servicing a single property. The question is, how would we address those un-metered properties? So we are, like I mentioned, working on a new water rate strategy as part of the Water Master Plan, which will be brought by Mr. Rolston to council in the new year. Further, we do recognize that metering every single property is the most equitable option from a billing perspective. However, we have spoken with our consultant who has experience with this and has said that we can develop a reasonable water rate structure for those properties. And this will be based on consumption that we've, projection collected from the similar properties in the area or types of businesses. This brings us back to the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the report. Council questions for Mr. Morewood. Go ahead, Counselor Hamilton, then Counselor Peddengill.
Thanks very much, Mr. Morewood. I think water metering, I've lived many places, several places that have water metering. And I know that when I see how much I've used, it motivates me to use less as opposed to having an infinite amount. I understand that connection. For the 28 meters that are being proposed, that you're proposing to install, at $2.5 million for those 28 meters, that's an average of $90,000 per water meter. I'm struggling to understand, so how a water meter installation can cost $90,000? I'm not questioning it, I'm just struggling to understand it. And then my second piece of that is, is that a sensible use of $90,000 for the potential gain in water, the reduction in water consumption? Yeah. So could you tell me, how can a water meter cost an average of $90,000 for these 28 meters that are to be installed?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. Again, as, these are all external water meters, external water meters are very expensive. And as I, the photo I showed earlier, they can be quite large and they require a lot of civil work. They can inquire, you know, pavement disruption, asphalt disruption, materials are very expensive, labor is very expensive. So they, that's been our experience, is that how much they cost? As far as is a good use of funding, again, what we've done is we've broken it into cost per unit rather than cost per property. So some of those properties may have 100 individual units, so may cost $100,000 to install a chamber, but they also may have 90, 100 units. So the average cost again for all those units is around $4,000.
Yeah, and while, I also, yeah, in my mind, that also says that as we distribute the metering across more people, it reduces the impact of viewing my individual consumption driving my use patterns, because that's 100 people sharing in a strata and their strata fees just pay the water meter. So it's not clear to me that that's going to give as much benefit as the individual. Thanks.
Counselor Peddengill.
Yeah, thanks. And I saw, unless I missed it, we've sort of looked at, diced up the numbers in terms of number of properties, number of units. Do we have a sense of what percentage of water consumption these numbers represent? Like this is the remaining 10% of ICI water, or it's 20% of all district waters represented by the 28 or the 18, or I'm just wondering if you can speak to that at all?
Of each individual property and how much their consumption is relatively, but we're talking about 27 out of 3,200, so maybe 1% or 2% of the total water consumption of that subset of customers for ICI and multifamily. So it would be a relatively small portion of water that would be consumed by those remaining consumers.
So we don't have like our three biggest water customers by far in this 27 then?
Through the chair, I'm not sure we know that. Again, this is what the meters will help us determine, right? So once we install the meters, we'll know, but I'm not sure if we know that offhand.
Yeah, we don't currently meter properties, so we don't know how much each individual property uses.
I thought, but haven't we metered a lot of the ICI, so we would know sort of what's left? And so we know our total amount, we know we've metered this amount, so then there's a remainder. So how big is that remainder? And is that a giant remainder or it's actually fairly small? And so we can't splice it individually to the 27, but we have a ballpark of like, yeah, this is in the 1%, 2% range.
Through the chair, we don't know with certainty, but there, I don't think there's any particular user that jumps out in that subset that would be, we would anticipate to be a major water consumer.
Okay, thanks. And then the other question, and it's a bit of a two part. So one, can you remind me why we elected not to, and maybe it wasn't a choice, but to sort of say to people, look, by 2025, you have to have a meter that meets these specs installed, it's up to you to get it. If you want, if you want water, you got to do it, as opposed to us doing that. And then it ties into, well, I'll ask my second question after.
Through the chair, that was never contemplated as part of the 2015 Water Master Plan. It is something that council could choose to do. I think it would be a financial hardship for some customers and so challenging to pay the cost of a water meter installation, but I think it is technically something that could be done if council desired to do that.
Okay, thanks. And then just, I guess the second part is, can you remind me, our plans for residential, do we eventually plan to meter all residential or we are for now planning to just stop at ICI?
Through the chair, so the approach with the water, the 2015 Water Master Plan was to start off with ICI and multifamily to gain experience through that program of operating water meters, learning about how much the capital costs are to install and probably operate for a period of time. And then to, for that to inform our longer term approach to water metering. So there are, with the single family residential properties, that would be the remaining 60% of consumption, but it represents, so under this program, sorry, what are the total number of meters that we've installed with multifamily and ICI?
329, was it?
Okay, and we've got roughly 4,000 plus single family residential. So there's scaled more than 10 times the number of meters that would need to be installed through that program, and therefore the cost would be much higher. And so because of that capital cost and basically, they're not really being a business case per se to do that, it would be more from a water consumption or water conservation equitable billing standpoint that would rationalize making a move in that direction. But yeah, so just the approach was, let's start with this, see how it goes, see how the consumption drops, understand the capital costs, and then that would inform our longer term decision making.
Go ahead, Mr. Morewood, if you'd like to add to that.
Yeah, if I would, thank you. As I mentioned, any new, any new buildings, residential otherwise have meter boxes installed as well. Anytime we do a new capital water project, we also install the boxes. So we are preparing for in the future as we're able.
Just on that point, can you clarify, a meter box is not a meter though? So do all new buildings have water meters or just the ability to put in a meter over time?
Through the chairs, so our subdivision development control bylaw requires that single family residential install just the meter chamber so that it would facilitate that future meter for ICI and multifamily, they would be required to actually install the meter.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I may have heard for it, then Counselor French, then myself, and I'll go back to Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and seems to have some solid logic there. One of the things that jumped out at me was our requirements on the new development and potential for redevelopment of some of these properties. I don't want to get into the specific properties, that's not what we're here to do, but was the age of the property and the redevelopment potential, something that was one of the decision points for you, considering what was going to be metered or not, given that maybe in the, in the not so distant future, one of these could potentially redevelop? And then the onus for the install would then go to that redevelopment? And is that a reasonable piece? And was that something you considered?
Thank you through the chair. Yes, certainly as what information we have, anything that's currently going through the system that we anticipate coming forward, we're not installing meters there. That's the intention.
Counselor French.
Thank you. I only have one question because all my others have successfully been answered. From the meters that are currently installed, do we have useful data? Like have we been accumulating data from those already installed meters?
Through the chair, we have been collecting that data. We haven't been analyzing it or evaluating it at any level to date, but we have been collecting that information.
Okay, thanks Chair.
Just a question of my own, so picking up on Counselor Hamilton's question, I'm just wondering if staff can clarify the value proposition of spending 2.5 million on the remaining 28? I'm just wondering if staff can clarify the value proposition of spending 2.5 million on the remaining 28 proposed meters to install. So if I do the per unit calculation on the ones that we've already done, that's less than 1,500 per unit. And now we've set a threshold of up to 10,000. With, I appreciate the criteria of trying to install the majority of the meters based on the 2015 direction. But we are already going to have to establish a hybrid meter rate, or sorry, a hybrid rate for our water rates going forward. And so I'm just curious about really pinning this down of like, 2.5 million dollars is a lot of money for the 28 remaining. And so do we just leave the 40 whatever that are out there un-metered? What's the risk of doing that?
Through the chair, uh, so it is professional judgment ultimately that's leading to that, that $10,000 per unit. Uh, it is 28 meters, but again, it represents 631 units. So that's, that's a consideration. If we left that entire, all the remaining to be metered properties un-metered, then that would be 650, 659. So that's roughly, you know, 15 to 20% of, of the entire number of properties that would, that council originally directed to meter. So we've, we had to draw a line somewhere in terms of what's the dollar per unit. We felt that this made the most sense, that it accomplished council's original directive to meter all ICI and multifamily properties. But recognizing that as we go further down this program and it's the hardest meters that are left to install, that we probably should draw the line somewhere. And it was just professional judgment and looking at trying to accomplish council's original directive in helping how we set that, that line.
Appreciate that and do very much appreciate your professional judgment. I guess I'm curious on what is the risk if we were to like lower that threshold to 5,000? Or if we were to direct staff to go back and look at like getting to a certain percentage of properties? I'm just, I'm curious what the risk is there for us if we don't fully try and, we're not going to fulfill council's original 2015 direction, we're not going to get there. And so where, where is that risk trade off? And how do we get further insight on that?
Through the chairs, so I think the, the impacts of not metering that would be reduced water conservation. So there'd be less properties that would be metered and would therefore probably be more mindful of their water consumption. So it may not achieve the, the water conservation goals that, that we've set out. And there could also be some upset customers who feel that they have meters and other similar properties have not been metered. And so it could be contentious from a, a consumer standpoint that there is inequitable billing taking place.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'll go to councillor Hamilton, then councillor Penningill, and then councillor Greenlaw. But I see Mr. Morewood's hand first, so I'll go to you and then we'll.
Thank you. Uh, just through your chair, just to add to that question. Did a very quick kind of cost analysis of, of $5,000. So if we did use $5,000 per meter as the limit, you would save, the district would save $700,000 in the capital installation. But you would reduce the number of, of, of units measured by, mercifully metered by about 100. So you would, you would save 700, $700,000, but you would meter 100 less units.
That was very helpful, quick and back with the envelope calculation. Thank you. Councillor Hamilton, then councillor Pangill, and councillor Greenlaw.
Thanks very much. Um, I too am leaning very much towards struggling to see the, the real value in continuing to install meters, even any meters into the 2024 budget. And what I'm, what I'd really like to understand is what is the additional? Because it's one of you, one of the objectives of council was to install meters in all MCI and multifamily. But of course that was done at, you know, an estimate of 3.7 million. We're now well beyond that. So we've really, we've changed that metric. And so the secondary metric is gathering enough data. And do you think there is a substantial gain in the data that we will collect from the, these 28 additional units? Compared to the 28 additional sites, sorry, I'm mixing up units and sites. Compared to the data we are already going to be collecting on the 293 that we have installed?
Through the chair, I think most properties' consumption would be predictable. And in many cases, you could compare a multi, one multifamily residential to another and assume that the per unit consumption would be consistent. But with that said, there is potential that a particular property could have a major leak or that there could be heavy landscaping water consumption or things of that nature that you just can't predict. You need to actually go and install the meter and measure to be certain.
Thanks. Yeah. And in my mind, that, that argument, that logic only applies to the situation where we're going to meter all of them. Once we've decided we're not going to meter all of them, any that we've decided not to meter could have that challenge, right? Yeah.
Uh, councillor Pangill and councillor Greenlaw, and then we'll aim to wrap up this conversation.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to sort of check because my understanding is that beyond promoting conservation, a key area of this was that, you know, you know, at an upstream meter, how much a portion of the network is using in total? And then if, if sub networks below that, some of those are metered, you can infer the remainder, their, their consumption. And so part of what we're doing is understanding quickly where leaks are, where problems are. And, and so I guess i- in my mind, I'm wondering if, if it's, if the sort of cost threshold is less important in choosing, but making sure we actually have a, a robust network where we can infer the consumption in the gaps because we've chosen to meter the right properties. And so I'm just wondering to the degree we are or could be doing that. Because to me, that's sort of where the real value is. And you don't actually have to meter everything to know what everyone's consumption is. If, you know, if you've got the right meters in the right places, it seems.
Through the chair, um, it's a good comment. And, uh, the district completed a water loss management study in approximately 2011. And part of the recommendations of that program was to install district meters, where it actually broke our, our water system into zones. And, uh, we've been working on that. So we have, I believe, approximately 15 meters. So it breaks our, our water system into 15 different zones where now we can actually drill down into a neighborhood by neighborhood basis and, um, measure and analyze water consumption within those portions of the network. So my, and it's part of our financial, within our proposed financial plan to update that water loss management study. And the intent is that we use the, the data from those district meters for that. So that's, um, that would be the approach, certainly having individual properties metered as well is another important piece to that. And that would also come into it. But at a high level, I think having district zone meters is probably the, um, the most effective approach to kind of starting to hone in on, on specific areas of our system that may have high leakage or high consumption for various reasons.
So I guess I'll just sort of leave a comment. Then I, I do sort of wonder if we should look at some of these funds and do we put some of those, you know, move forward or accelerate some of the zone meters? Because then with what we've got already, like, we don't actually have to do the individual properties. But we have enough data then if we've done one or two extra zone meters, for example. And I just sort of wonder if, um, you know, if, if that makes the most sense.
Councillor Greenlaw?
Thanks. Yeah, I would echo, echo some of the comments that have been going around. In particular, what councillor Penningill was just talking about. It does seem like a lot, a lot of money for our municipality to, um, to meter these buildings in this way when there is a lot of room for using the data that we have and inferring loss. The, and then I just wanted to clarify something. Sorry, you were talking about the new builds and metering the new builds. So are the new builds not installing their own meters? They're just installing the meter boxes? So they're prepared to install meters?
Through the chairs, so single family residential, they are only installing the chamber and not the meter themselves? All the other properties are actually installing the meters?
Okay, so then are, is the district then going back and paying to install the meters at the, the, the single residentials?
Through the chairs, so the approach there was to facilitate a future move to metering those properties. But the district isn't actually going and installing meters on single family residential at this time. It was really to position the district so that if we made that move in the future, the costs would be significantly reduced by having developers put that chamber in. So all we would have to do is go and put a meter in that chamber. So the cost would be greatly reduced if we were to proceed that route, route in the future.
But why not just have them install meters?
Uh, through the chair, because I, well, currently even still, we don't have a, uh, water rate structure that, uh, allows for, uh, billing consumers based on metered usage. So it's certainly a choice that council could make to require that new single family residential install the meter as well. It's just, it was a policy decision made back in 2008 where we weren't in a position at that point to move into a metering program. So it's just the meter. But there's certainly opportunity to require single family residential news, new builds in the future to install a meter as well.
And just on that, staff will be coming back, uh, early next year with a new proposed water rate structure, which would probably be a better time to talk about how we want to start to equitably consider how we want to set water rates for properties that are un-metered and how we want to encourage single families, uh, properties to move to metering over time. Um, so that's not part of today's discussion, but it will be coming forward at the start of next year. Okay, thanks. Um, I do see that councillor Hamilton has a motion. I have heard from around the table that there's probably some hesitation around the staff recommendation on the floor. So I do just want to turn it back to staff based on what they've heard. If there's anything in particular that you think would be a, a, an appropriate direction, given if, if council is not comfortable with the staff recommendation. If it's a refer back to staff, if there's a clear line that we can cut here. Just wanted to give you a head, a moment to think about it before we put a motion on the floor Just wanted to give you a head, a moment to think about it before we put a motion on the floor. Or raise any concerns. Yeah, we'll take a five minute recess and we'll come back at 1:57.
I'm struggling to see the value proposition. I believe I have not seen an argument that doesn't state that to contradict that we can get the information to make a clearer plan moving forward. Because that was one of the original motivations of this, of this plan of the, of the ICI and multifamily installation. I believe we can use the data that we've currently got and make a plan with clear forecasted budgets moving forward.
Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair, I generally agree with Counselor Hamilton, but I just, I have concerns around potential costs of breaking current contracts. And I was wondering, are there no concerns about that?
I did think that we sought clarity from staff that the remaining, that none of the ones that we're discussing here of the 46 are currently within contract.
Okay, good. Thanks. Then I'll be speaking in support of the motion.
I see a questioning hand from Counselor Penny. No, go ahead, Counselor Pangil.
Yeah, I guess I'm not quite there on this because it seems, given the conversation, what we're saying is that 80% of the properties have had their meters put in by the tax base. And so those costs were shared by the whole community to give us better understanding of our water system. And the remaining 20%, then when we're pushing off having that extra data, but individual property owners will have to do that individually. And, and addressing that as opposed to have this sort of community as a whole fund that does create a disparity, which I guess I'm a little bit uncomfortable with. You know, I'd sort of like to hear any additional thoughts, but, but for me, sort of given the whole discussion I've heard, it makes sense to me for us to proceed on the same sort of funding approach that everyone has their meters funded in the same way, sort of where I'm headed. Thanks.
I'll make some comments and then I'll see if there's any other hands. I will support the motion on the floor and to speak to Counselor Penny's question, it is to defer. And so I think one of the things that will be forthcoming and as Counselor Hamilton spoke to you, we're going to have to create a hybrid rate structure anyways if we've made the decision to not go 100% to the ICI and the full multifamily. And so I appreciate that this may create a little bit of additional inequity. My understanding is that when we were going to move to the new hybrid or the new hybrid rate structure, given that already single family homes weren't going to be metered, but our ICI and our multifamily were, there's going to be a few years or at least a year of shadow billing so that we can understand where we actually establish that rate structure for those properties that are metered. And I think that'll give us better information to understand where we want to continue to put in the water meters for the ICI and the multifamily in perhaps a more directed way as opposed to just this cutoff of like $10,000 per unit. Maybe there are some that really do flag as a higher importance or lower importance when we get to dig into that data. And so I think that for me, this is not pushing off forever. I do think that in an interest in trying to get to an equitable solution at the end of the day, we are going to have to meter all these properties eventually or encourage them to transition to metering in some way. I just don't think we have all the tools in our toolbox or the information that we need to do that in a cost effective way at this point and a prioritized way at this point. And so I, again, I don't think it, in 2015, we anticipated that it was going to take us 10 years to get here. I think we have quite a few in, we have that majority of the meters in for the ICI and the multifamily. So let's move forward with those in a hybrid system and then start to be a bit more nuanced about how we put these in over time. So I'll support the motion on the floor. Mayor Herford, then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm speaking in support of the motion. I applaud staff for bringing forward their, their initial recommendation, recognizing the, you know, where the project was and the need to, to scale back responsibly. And, but I think that from what I've heard in the, in the meeting here today, that we have quite a bit of information to go on. And I think there's a diminishing, sort of point of diminishing returns here. And so I think it's, it's appropriate to defer altogether. And as I've heard in Counselor Stoner's comments, perhaps applying a more strategic lens to surgically go and do the ones that are of the highest impact or importance rather than coming, so looking for more like a technical need or data need rather than the budget sort of lens applied exclusively to, or predominantly to the, to the decision. So I think this puts us in a, this program still has positioned us in a good, a good place for, for moving forward. And I think this is a responsible course of action from a budgetary perspective. So I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson, then Counselor French.
Yes, I'll also speak in favor of Counselor Hamilton's motion. There's been a number of benefits that have been identified by staff in this report and in the past, and especially deferral of capacity related upgrades is a benefit of, of the metering program. Another theme that has always been referred to back to 2005 is climate action or climate change adaptation. However, since 2005 or 2008, our district and community awareness of wildfire risks in the urban interface has also, is also different than it was when we started the conversation about water metering. What I'm suggesting is in addition, in addition to customer equity as a concern, we also need to balance our priorities with respect to municipal funds and resources. And in my opinion, our community wildfire protection plan action items are under-resourced. We have a huge backlog of work to do in this area. It is very large. Education, outreach, neighborhood chipping programs and how we handle this material that we should be addressing. Leaving aside the larger forest stand treatments that we apply for grants for, so that's just an example. I'd like to put this into a different context with respect to municipal resources and how we allocate them. In the strategic plan, the report cites council's long-term objectives of investing in infrastructure to ensure adaptability in the face of climate change by reducing water demand. I think we should also look also here at that other topic of community wildfire protection and our plan. Finally, I appreciated staff clarifying that a reasonable water rate structure could be applied for unmetored units. And as Acting Mayor Stoner has suggested, we are anyway going to be looking at a hybrid rate structure. Thank you.
Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. I'm speaking in favor of the motion. What I see in the staff report is very much focused on solid engineering. And we've, we've heard that phrase professional judgment a few times today, which, which I think is extremely pertinent to this conversation. And a little less of what I saw in the staff report was around finances and the challenging times that we're in as we prepare tonight to meet with our community for a budget information session. So very timely that we're having this conversation, real conversation about dollars and cents in a very solid engineering scenario. So I, I think that this is a responsible decision at this time to sort of go back to the drawing board of how we're going to spend money on these remaining meters and boxes and all of that engineering side that costs real money.
Counselor Pangil?
Yeah, I'll support the resolution with a couple of caveats. And the one is we know we're going to have a hybrid billing system for a long time as long until everyone is metered. But all hybrid systems are not equal. And the more we have quality data to inform, you know, some portion of the metered piece, the, the hybrid overall system can be really good or really terrible. And I think we want to get to something that's really quite good and equitable. And so, you know, it's one of the reasons why I'm hesitating a bit to support. The other thing is I think what I've heard in the discussion is that there may be an opportunity to target based on, you know, what part of the network do we really need data from? As opposed to using a criteria of $5,000 or $10,000 or so on. That may or may not be true in our ability to deduce, you know, what are the right places from our network? I'm not, it's not clear to me that we have the information we need to actually make that. So this is a committee of the whole. From my perspective, if there was clarity in a staff memo that said like, realistically where we are, $5,000 or $10,000 of threshold we came to you with is really the best we can do to know how to move forward. You know, I may change my mind when we come to ratification. And that may have been said already and I lost it in some of the discussion, but sort of on the premise that there is an opportunity to actually selectively choose some properties to really improve the quality of, of the hybrid system as opposed to $5,000 or $10,000. Like we know that one, that's a key data point that's missing. That's a reason to support this, but if I'm wrong there and like 10,000, really that is the best we can do and we should move forward. I may change my vote at ratification. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? The opposed motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, council will move on. We are running a little bit behind schedule. Apologies. We are now on item 42, which is a discussion on a district rezoning bylaw for 38123 Cleveland Avenue. And we'll give staff a moment to get set up. Here we go. I'll pass it over to Mr. Valaniscus and Ms. Fletcher. Go ahead.
Thank you. A little out of practice. So good afternoon, Mayor, Chair and Council. My name is Jesse Fletcher. I'm a planner with the Community Planning Department. And with me today is the Senior Director of Community Planning, Jonas Valaniscus. Today I'm here seeking feedback on a rezoning application located at 38123 Cleveland Ave. So I'll just start with an outline. This is the first time this application has been introduced to committee. So I'll walk through the file background, the location and context of the site, introduce the proposed zone massing parking considerations and community amenity contribution. The project has been subject to the district's viewscape study, so I'll review details of those considerations. Staff are seeking council feedback on the parking proposal, CAC offer and proposed unit mix. A rezoning application for 38123 Cleveland Ave was received in March of 2020. This is the first application received for the site under the current official community plan. The site has been a series of grocery has also, is also different than it was when we started the conversation about water metering. What I'm suggesting is, in addition to customer equity as a concern, we also need to balance our priorities with respect to municipal funds and resources. And in my opinion, our community wildfire protection plan action items are under-resourced. We have a huge backlog of work to do in this area. It is very large. Education, outreach, neighborhood chipping programs, and how we handle this material that we should be addressing, leaving aside the larger forest and treatments that we apply for grants for. So that's just an example. I'd like to put this into a different context with respect to municipal resources and how we allocate them. In the strategic plan, the report cites council's long-term objectives of investing in infrastructure to ensure adaptability in the face of climate change by reducing water demand. I think we should also look also here at that other topic of community wildfire protection in our plan. Finally, I appreciated staff clarifying that a reasonable water rate structure could be applied for un-metered units. And as Acting Mayor Stoner has suggested, we are anyway going to be looking at a hybrid rate structure. Thank you.
Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm speaking in favor of the motion. What I see in the staff report is very much focused on solid engineering. And we've heard that phrase, professional judgment, a few times today, which I think is extremely pertinent to this conversation. And a little less of what I saw in the staff report was around finances and the challenging times that we're in as we prepare tonight to meet with our community for a budget information session. So very timely that we're having this conversation, real conversation about dollars and cents in a very solid engineering scenario. So I think that this is a responsible decision at this time to sort of go back to the drawing board of how we're going to spend money on these remaining meters and boxes and all of that engineering side that costs real money.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, I'll support the resolution with a couple of caveats. And the one is, we know we're going to have a hybrid billing system for a long time, as long until everyone is metered. But all hybrid systems are not equal. And the more we have quality data to inform, you know, some portion of the metered piece, the hybrid overall system can be really good or really terrible. And I think we want to get to something that's really quite good and equitable. And so, you know, it's one of the reasons why I'm hesitating a bit to support. The other thing is, I think what I've heard in the discussion is that there may be an opportunity to target based on, you know, what part of the network do we really need data from? As opposed to using a criteria of $5,000 or $10,000 or so on. That may or may not be true in our ability to deduce, you know, what are the right places from our network. I'm not, it's not clear to me that we have the information we need to actually make that. So this is a committee of the whole. From my perspective, if there was clarity in a staff memo that said like, realistically where we are, $5,000 or $10,000 of the threshold we came to with is really the best we can do to know how to move forward. You know, I may change my mind when we come to ratification. And that may have been said already, and I lost it in some of the discussion. But sort of on the premise that there is an opportunity to actually selectively choose some properties to really improve the quality of the hybrid system as opposed to $5,000 or $10,000, like we know that one, that's a key data point that's missing. That's a reason to support this. But if I'm wrong there and like $10,000, really that is the best we can do and we should move forward, I may change my vote at ratification. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor? The opposed motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, counsel will move on. We are running a little bit behind schedule. Apologies. We are now on item 42, which is a discussion on a district rezoning bylaw for 38123 Cleveland Avenue. And we'll give staff a moment to get set up. Here we go. I'll pass it over to Mr. Valaniscus and Ms. Fletcher. Go ahead.
Thank you. A little out of practice. So, good afternoon, Mayor, Chair, and Counsel. My name is Jesse Fletcher. I'm a planner with the Community Planning Department. And with me today is the Senior Director of Community Planning, Jonas Valaniscus. Today, I'm here seeking feedback on a rezoning application located at 38123 Cleveland Ave. So I'll just start with an outline. This is the first time this application has been introduced to committee. So I'll walk through the file background, the location and context of the site, introduce the proposed zone, massing, parking considerations, and community amenity contribution. The project has been subject to the district's viewscape study, so I'll review details of those considerations. Staff are seeking counsel feedback on the parking proposal, CAC offer, and proposed unit mix. A rezoning application for 38123 Cleveland Ave was received in March of 2020. This is the first application received for the site under the current official community plan. The site has been a series of grocery and department stores, and most recently, a bicycle retail and repair store. The files review has been subject to the results of the district's viewscape study, locations of which are shown on the inset map. Given its adjacency to identified future public plaza spaces in the downtown and its potential impact on the viewscapes from those locations, the viewscape policy has driven staff review of this application. The subject site is located in downtown Squamish at the north corner of Cleveland Avenue and Winnipeg Street. The site contains an existing retail operation and a large private parking area with access from Winnipeg Street. This table shows the existing zoning and proposed zoning, as well as the official community plan land use and development permit areas, which would continue to apply if this rezoning is successful. The site is designated Downtown Commercial Center in the OCP, which provides policy guidance and suggests a maximum floor area ratio of 2.3. The applicant's proposal largely fits the designation with its proposed use mix and floor area ratio. Development permit areas for the site would include flood and wildfire, and for form and character, the universal guidelines and the downtown commercial guidelines. This is a high-level overview of the proposed CD111 Zone, which attempts to capture the proposed massing and density put forward by the applicant while also capturing some key policy objectives. A full copy of the draft zone is included in your report package today. Some points of note, the height exceeds the maximum C4 zone height by 2.5 meters, though does not exceed the maximum six stories. This allows for consistently higher floor-to-ceiling heights, which, when applied to the employment use, facilitates more usable employment space. The setbacks have been created to meet the idealized viewscape as proposed by the view study. A full comparison to what was requested and what is proposed is detailed in your report package today. Worth noting that staff are supportive of a slightly reduced setback for the employment use on Cleveland, and it supports increased, as it supports increased office space. So a policy trade-off that staff are presenting for council consideration. The applicant is seeking a significant parking variance. Again, staff are presenting this trade-off between parking and preservation of the viewscapes for council consideration. This slide shows the massing that's being proposed. And in a few slides, we'll demonstrate how the massing responded to the view study. But what's notable here is the yellow area approximates the extent of the office block and its reduced setback in relation to Cleveland Ave compared to the residential. The blue is the at-grade retail space, and the gray represents the above-grade parkade. This is a site plan showing the layout of the site at grade. Parking is provided off the lane, as is access to the parkade. Retail is provided at grade, as is a mid-block connection and a widened plaza space off of Winnipeg, at the junction of Winnipeg and Cleveland Ave. This table is also in the staff report today, labeled Table 3. This table illustrates the degree to which parking is being provided as per the requirements of the zoning bylaw. The bylaw provides an opportunity for cash-in-lue of commercial parking. The applicant is proposing a variance to bring down the required parking amount and thereby the required in-lue parking amount. The applicant is proposing to meet the required residential parking, but vary the commercial parking so that nine stalls would be provided as cash-in-lue and five commercial stalls onsite. So this table is a bit tough to navigate, so I apologize. But the next slide will provide a bit more guidance. So the way the zoning bylaw is set up, it allows for commercial developments to provide cash-in-lue for up to four parking stalls with none provided. This means that if you were required to provide four commercial parking stalls only, you could provide cash for all four and not provide any onsite. All stalls above four need to be provided at a rate of 50%, while the remaining can be provided as cash-in-lue. In the first table, the table above, it shows how, if no variance was requested, we would determine the amount of stalls required onsite. After removing the four base cash-and-lue stalls, we see that 15 stalls are required, and the applicant could provide cash-and-lue for up to 19 stalls. In the scenario proposed by the applicant, the developer is proposing to provide five commercial stalls onsite and cash-and-lue for nine stalls. This requires that the base amount of parking be varied to 14 stalls. After removing the four base cash-and-lue stalls, the applicant can provide cash-and-lue for up to another five stalls, but would be required to provide five onsite. Sorry, the figure here is of the core transit network from the Transit Future Plan 2015 and also shows the proposed future regional and interregional networks if they were to come to fruition. When reviewing this proposal, staff gave consideration to the site's location on the core transit network, the Community Climate Action Plan's direction towards disincentivizing private vehicle use, and the impacts of applying the view study to the project and its impacts on the available floor area in the development. This application triggers the community amenity contribution policy. The applicant has proposed the following offer which exceeds the policy. Staff note that the majority of the land lift can be attributed to the affordable housing units. So next, I'll take counsel through the views study at a high level. There are six slides, and they're presented with a number on top, which corresponds to the inset map on the bottom. The proposed possible is the ideal viewscape in a post-development context as recommended by the view study, where the current possible models the existing possible zoning. And then, of course, the applicant has demonstrated how their project would impact the viewscape. So this one is from the corner of Winnipeg and Second, looking southeast. The current zoning obscures the view, and staff have worked to secure a larger setback from Winnipeg and a larger upper-story setback to preserve some of the view from this future public plaza space as identified in the OCP. The larger ground-floor ceiling heights obscure the viewscape slightly from what the proposed possible is demonstrating. This one is from the corner of Winnipeg and Cleveland, from the east corner, looking northwest. And again, this slide looking the same direction, but from the south corner. This is from the same location as the previous slide, but looking northeast. And finally, again, looking northeast, but from the westernmost corner at the intersection of Cleveland and Winnipeg. So staff recommend, that community recommend to council that they receive the report for 38123 Cleveland Ave and provide information on the CAC offer, proposed unit mix, and parking variance, and that council directs staff to resolve any comments prior to consideration of first and second reading.
Thank you very much for the tight presentation and the detailed map on the parking variances. Very much appreciated. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Fletcher this afternoon? Counsel Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you. The report highlights the issue of the 15% grade for the parking ramp up to the parking on the second floor, and that this may not comply with our subdivision development control bylaw. I wonder if staff could elaborate on whether there's a risk here? Is there, are there options, or are we going to be stuck on this issue? Are there precedents for a 15% grade in similar-type buildings?
Through the chair, this was something that would need to be resolved before building permit. So it's not something that we're asking the applicant to address at this time. However, there are conditions within the subdivision development control bylaw where 15% grade may be acceptable if other parts of it are met. We would leave that for the applicant to figure out prior to building permit, or they would not get a building permit.
Counsel, other questions? Go ahead. We'll go Counselor Hamilton, Counselor French, and Counselor Penningill.
Thanks very much. And thanks for the additional clarity on the parking. But I think I'm still seeking clarity. So in the report, it mentions some connection between the setbacks due to the viewscapes and parking requirements. Is there any actual relationship there? Or is it just that, you know, the setbacks are costing money and therefore they're asking for a relaxation in the parking cash-in-lue?
Thank you. Through the chair. So it's a good question with a tricky answer. So the required setbacks in the existing zoning are 4.26, I believe, from the third and fourth story, and then eight meters-ish from the fifth and sixth story from Cleveland, from the property line from Cleveland, or the property line from Cleveland approximated on an angle that I find utterly challenging to describe without the bylaw in front of me. But now we're seeking a 14-meter setback on that third story and above. So the floor area that they're able to achieve through this rezoning is lower now than what the zoning would permit. So there's less available to them. So it's essentially where staff have, based on the view study, requested a larger setback, and that has left less floor area available for them to meet the same residential space. So it's a trade-off that we're presenting for consideration.
And so I think it's, Mia, I'd like to understand better what the current zoning allows. So I understand the setback of the current zoning. What's the height of the current zoning?
Through the chair, the height is the same number of stories. It's 20 meters, whereas they're proposing about 22.5 meters at this point.
So if they were stick to, if they were required to stick to the existing zoning, they would be one, they would need to come to 20 meters and therefore need to either decide to make shorter ceilings or take off one story. Is that a correct understanding?
Through the chair, under the existing zoning, we would anticipate that they could propose a six-story building, but with smaller floor-to-ceiling heights.
Thanks. That's it for now.
Just belly on Counselor Hamilton's question about the decrease in floor area ratio. Does that actually mean that there's lower parking that's required because they're building less floor area? So if they had the full floor area ratio build-out, they'd have, they'd have to put more parking in. Is that an incorrect? I understand they're making less money because there's less build-out area, but they're actually required to build less parking because there's less commercial area or residential area in the floor area ratio?
I'll take a stab at it. Yes, I think your understanding is the way the bylaw works in that downtown is a stall per unit. So we don't tie it to an area versus commercial is tied to floor area. So it's a bit of both.
Got it. Thank you. I'll go Counselor French, then Counselor Penningill.
Thanks, Chair. I'm curious to know if the Advisory Design Panel has seen this yet. I think the answer is no. And if I'm correct in that, will they eventually see this project?
Through the chair, the Advisory Design Panel has not seen this project, and it's not our policy to bring projects of this size or scale to Advisory Design Panel until they apply for development permit.
Okay. I'm looking forward to Counselor Stoner's questions about parking. So I'm not going to venture there because I think those questions might answer my questions, but we'll see. So the spaces that are slated as affordable housing units are all single-bedroom units. And I think that there's greater value in having one of the three-bedroom units as affordable. So the building could accommodate a family in need of an affordable home with a reduced number of one-bedroom units as designated as affordable. So my question is, is it feasible to take the floor space in the proposed seven one-bedroom units and take a portion of that for three bedrooms and then dedicate whatever is left over to one-bedroom units? Is that a feasible and viable option?
Through the chair, that's something we can discuss with the applicant.
Okay, great. And then in asking that question, I would love to hear from my council colleagues what they potentially think of a scenario like that. And I'm just doing a quick scan. I think those are all the questions I have for now.
Thank you, Counselor Penningill. So we'll just, we'll continue on questions, and then we'll do a round of comments at the end.
So we have seen, you know, our High Street has had a fair bit of success. And I guess depends what your definition of success is. And one of the consequences is we've lost a key community gathering space in the form of a cafe. As I read the permitted uses, one would be permitted there, another one, but lots of other things could. And so I'm just wondering in our discussions, are there anything we can or should be doing to try and facilitate rents that might accommodate sort of a more community-oriented gathering space as at least part of the commercial as some of these High Street developments are coming along?
Through the chair, to my knowledge, nothing more than what we have tried to do through zoning, which is to limit the frontage. So narrower frontages of 16 meters available on Cleveland, which can encourage smaller users.
Okay. And then the bike parking, because that whole, you know, I think we've recognized that we need more bike parking and facilities and so on. It looks like the bike parking there is really dedicated towards the residents, maybe some of the businesses. But given the location, the importance of that intersection, have we considered, are we thinking about, you know, this is maybe where we need to think about bike parking beyond just this location and charging as well? And is there an opportunity to think of some of that here? Especially if we're talking about reducing parking and so on, are we, you know, doing the other side of that? That public bike, charging bike parking and so on?
Through the chair, that's a great question. I do note that there is already a covered bike parking spot, just the kitty corner to this location. But we, that's something that we can take back and discuss with the applicant as well, including more commercial-type parking at the frontage.
Okay. And then my last question, to see if I have to come back in a comment. But have they talked about no-gas covenant for the whole building or just the residential at this point?
Through the chair, they have proposed for the residential a no-gas covenant, again, seeking the possibility if they were to have a restaurant user for the commercial.
Mayor Herford, go ahead.
Thank you. The amenity space question. The outdoor space, is there ability to have some of that? Or is it currently proposed to be covered? I didn't really get too much detail on that. And is that something that we could consider here? I'm just concerned about scoring that amenity space as amenity space, but only having it practically usable for what's probably a shockingly low percentage of the, of the year, either due to wind or winter rains and so on. So, and how does that affect heights and setbacks if we start getting into putting the roof structure over amenity space? Yeah. So yeah, where are we at with that currently? I know in other examples, we've had some covered amenity space outside.
Through the chair, so amenity space typically for something like this would be dealt with our development permit area guidelines, which do require some of that space to be covered. We've seen in similar scenarios, the use of shade sales. Because of the early stage of this project, it's not something that's been explored. And I'm not sure that I have a good answer in terms of how that would impact, impact the view. The viewscape at this location is something that would need to be looked at. It would also largely have an impact on some of the windows of the private space that look out onto the shared open space. And again, I think those are impacts that would need to be reviewed at development permit and not something that we have reviewed at this point.
Thank you. That's, that's a fair answer. However, given that we're looking at a rezoning that hinges in one of the decision points, is this acceptable amenity space? I'd like to understand that as best we can, and maybe that's something that can get a little bit further along by next time. And if we have conflicting policy goals, then we need to sort of understand where those are as early in the process as possible. So I'm not all the way there on that. The parking, I think, is as, as possible. So, uh, I'm not all the way there on that. Um, the parking, I think is, is, um, really interesting. I know that that, um, that property is currently used for general parking for the, for the community, um, which has been very generous of the landowner. Um, I score that at about approximately forty spots. That are used for commercial generally downtown now with a reduction to five, which is a lot. Is there opportunity on the Winnipeg frontage to go from the parallel parking in front that we see in front of it now to some of the angled parking that we see further down the block and on the other side of the street? I'm trying to think of how we, uh, as this development, uh, occurs here, how we can, um, positively impact other, other pieces. Is that something that's been, been considered? It, it does happen further to the, to the west on Winnipeg Street. Um, you go from, there's a few parallel spots in front of this property and it goes into a bit of an angled spot and gets a few more spots in there. Is that something that, that level of street design is something that you've looked at quite yet?
Uh, through the chair, uh, the streetscape currently in this location is being reviewed as part of this development is being, um, worked on, uh, by a consultant. Uh, my understanding, and it's something that we can refer to engineering for further review, is that angled street parking has been discouraged and sought to be discontinued because it does have a, it does conflict with active transportation users, um, when vehicles are pulling out, uh, when there are bikes on the street. Uh, so we can refer to engineering, but that's, as far as I know, it has not been pursued at this point.
So that street could, we could see the street parking further reduced if that same, um, if that theory was applied broadly to that block, it would be a few more spots gone in there as well.
Yeah, through the chair, that would be correct.
Um, okay. And then the affordable housing, um, it represents, was it fif- fifteen percent? Is that fifteen percent of the units or fifteen percent of floor space?
Through the chair, I'll have to do some math in my notebook quickly.
Thank you. I attempted to do the same and I was looking for an official, yeah, okay.
Um, through the chair, I can confirm that it's seventy-two percent of the lift, um, of units. Um, but
Yeah. So, okay. We'll put, uh, Jonas in charge of doing the math and we'll ask Jesse some more questions. I'll put myself on the list and I'll come back to you councillor Hamilton. Um, I do want to dig into the parking just a little bit more. Um, do you mind pulling, going back a few slides and pulling up the table that you had? That described the cash and loo versus the parking variance? And then my question is just, why wouldn't we calculate it by maximizing the cash and loo before applying the variance? That's the only thing to me that I think is the most confusing. Like, I think that this is reasonable, like, I think I can justify it if they're actually providing cash and loo and buying out because we use that money for active transportation and other things. But this to me is they're trying to reduce the cost of building parking as much as they can. So why would we consider doing the variance before applying the full cash and loo amount?
Uh, through the chair, uh, so it, it was proposed by the applicant to not do the full cash and loo amount. Even if they were to do the full cash and loo amount, they would still need to vary the parking by ten stalls to meet that amount. Um, given the request to step back the, the upper story so significantly from both Winnipeg and Cleveland. Uh, staff considered the request for a variance worth consideration by council, given the trade off there.
Thank you. That's helpful.
If I could just add, um, the, um, we're, we're, we're working on guidelines, uh, and policy for the implementation of the viewscape study. And one of the, one of the items we anticipate to be in the policy is a relaxation on parking for the projects that fall with, that get affected by, by the study. So it is a recognition that, you know, this development is doing above and beyond, um, and kind of working with draft, uh, policy directions. Um, hence the reason why staff have been supportive of this approach.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton, go ahead. Unless Mr. Valanescus has his math done for Mayor Herford's question.
It is fifteen percent of units. Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
And what is that of the square, of the square footage? Like, are we only, they're small units. So I'm trying to understand, to me, um, the councillor French started us on this, on this path about understanding these, what these one bedroom units are. But, you know, i- if that's substantially less than fifteen percent of the square footage of the residential space, I'd like to understand what that is. And that's kind of more where my mind is going, uh, rather than the unit, the unit count.
We're working on it.
You're sorry? Yeah.
We'll let Mr. Valanescus do a little bit more math while we go to councillor Hamilton's question.
Thanks. Um, I'm pretty sure I understand this, the answer to this question. I just want to make sure I understand, um, an eleven thousand dollar, um, CAC contribution. Um, I looked at that and thought, is that a typo? But I think it's the understanding the land lift. So could you just explain how we arrive at the eleven thousand eighty-five CAC contribution for critical amenities and active transportation?
Uh, through the chair, uh, so councillor Hamilton is correct. The, the land lift is, it, the CAC is calculated on the land lift. So currently under the existing zoning, they can build to an FAR of one point seven with thirty percent of that as employment space. Um, they're proposing to go to two point two four and based on a, a floor area ratio of two point two four and based on the current lot size, uh, that leads to a gross floor gross floor area. I don't know why that took me so long to get to that full word. Um, and the difference between that and what can be achieved under the last floor ratio, again, taking out the employment space in both of those proposed, that would be the land lift. And then we take out the affordable units, which are part of that land lift. And then we're left with about fifteen hundred square feet, which we then calculate the six dollars a square foot plus one fifty for active transportation and parks on.
We would then apply DCCs to the whole building though, uh, for underground infrastructure. Go ahead, Mr. Valanescus.
Thank you. I have the answer to the previous question. So it's eleven point three percent of the total floor, residential floor area. And so it's well above fifteen percent of the actual land lift because the property is already zoned C four and it allows for, um, for quite a bit of residential. So it's essentially the, the, all of the additional density. Most of it is affordable housing in this case.
Okay, council. Any further questions before we do a round of comments? I'll go to councillor French, then councillor Hamilton.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um, is, is this the point in time where we would be having conversation about, uh, on-street accessible parking spots? Or is, uh, that a consideration for farther down process?
Uh, through the chair, that would be further down the process. At this point, the, it's a go-no-go kind of high level decision whether council in general is agreeing with the type of density, uh, being proposed on site.
Just to clarify though, any parking that would be required, even with a parking variance, would have to meet our accessibility standards for parking. Through the chair, that is correct.
Yeah. I'm mostly concerned about on-street accessible, um, parking because uh, what, what we see in the drawings that we have, um, there, there's significant, um, accessible parking. And, uh, I had one more on parking. I'm just contemplating whether it's worth getting into minutia of actual numbers and, uh, I, yeah, I, I will ask, um, it looked to me like there are two spots for motorbike parking. They are, are small, um, beside the PMT, but they, they weren't labeled as motorbike parking. So just, i- is that what I was looking at? Um, and so this would be page twenty of the architect package and page forty-four of fifty-nine in the agenda package. And one of your slides quite clearly indicated that those parking or the, the area just off of the lane is labeled, was labeled in your presentation as parking, but in our package, they look like parking spots, but they're not actually labeled that way. So I'm just curious about those two beside the PMT, what's the status of those two parking spots? If in fact they are parking spots.
Uh, through the chair, uh, they are presumably motorbike parking stalls, um, two of which constitute one regular parking stall in the zoning by law.
Okay. Now that explains why my math didn't add up with the number of parking spots in the actual drawings as compared to what's in the staff report. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Hamilton, then councillor Greenlaw.
Well, parking, um, sorry, I'm trying to understand, uh, it's not clear to me where the commercials. I'm trying to understand why they're proposing five commercial, whether there's sort of a structural limitation there. Because I know that sometimes it's just really hard to get one extra, right? Um, so these commercial parkings that are proposed, are they the ones that are along the lane way that we see? Um, not labeled as parking in the staff, but look like parking lines, parking? Yeah, that. Where are the commercial parking spots?
Uh, through the chair, at this stage, it has not been confirmed which spots would be for commercial or residential. Though typically in buildings like this at development permit, when they typically do confirm where each is which the commercial is typically on the lane, I can't confirm either way because the applicant hasn't provided that information.
Okay. Cause I see eleven spots here. One, two, three, four, yeah, eleven spots on the lane. And I was confused why only five of them would be allocated for commercial. Um, but perhaps that's for them to get the residential requirements?
Uh, through the chair, I, they, they are meeting the residential requirement or proposing to meet the residential requirement. So presumably the additional would be for residential.
Any further questions councillor Hamilton? You want to ponder that for a minute?
I count more than, there's more parking spots in the drawings than there are in the proposals. So I'm confused.
Uh, through the chair, we'll come back with more information. Okay. I'll go councillor Greenlaw. Then we'll try and aim for comments after that.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I just wanted some clarification on the, on Mayor Herford's question. My understanding was that he was asking about the proportion square footage wise of affordable housing versus the square footage of residential. And from my calculations, I get six point five percent. From their, um, zoning and development stats, it looks to me like it's twenty-five hundred square feet for the five, square feet for the five units versus the, um, thirty-five hundred square meters for the total residential, which would convert to two hundred and thirty-two square meters for the five units of, um, below market housing, which is six point five percent of thirty-five hundred square meters. So I just wanted to see clarification on that.
Appreciate getting into the details. This is a first pass at committee of the whole. And so staff are looking for feedback on these things. And so as opposed to getting them to do the additional math here at the table, I think we can provide feedback. Uh, what they're looking for is feedback on the community many contribution offer and the proposed unit mix. And so you can add it into your comments in terms of what additional detail or clarity you would like with this to come back. Sure. Any other questions? All right. We'll start, start around a comments. Um, again, you're welcome to comment on anything within the proposal, but specifically staff are looking for feedback on the community many contribution offer, the proposed unit mix and the parking variance. And we'll start with councillor Peddingill.
All right. Uh, so I would like to understand the, the, have some clarity on the proportion of non-market. Um, I have some, similar questions. I'm, uh, uh, in general, okay to trade parking, uh, for building or development viability in, in terms, uh, in, to trade that off for permitted uses, viewscapes, height, non-market housing provision and so on. So just, um, it's a little bit hard for me to understand what is the exact numbers, but I am typically okay with, um, being a bit more aggressive in, in not being reliant on vehicles into the future. So, uh, some flexibility, but you know, I'm not sort of sure. I might prefer to see some units with no residential parking, uh, or not a requirement there. And, you know, given the amount of commercial in that area, this is a pretty significant, as much as I, you know, understand we need to move aggressively. Um, I, I wonder if, if a few more commercial spots should be expected, um, but trading for a few of the residential spots potentially. And, and I think, you know, that's offset with our parking management changes or doubling of transit, a desire for a human focus downtown. I, I think also thinking about more public bike parking, including charging. Uh, I, I think that has to be part of our consideration of reducing parking. Um, I think we, you know, I, I am concerned a bit about the uses. Maybe this not, it's not fair for this development to solve the problem, but I think as we develop these on our high street, we do need to think about community gathering spaces. And what are we doing to help ensure, you know, it's not just a, uh, you go in and leave with a coffee shop or notice sit down, but is there sort of a community gathering space? It could be for profit, but where people can actually sort of gather on, on our high street and, um, you know, a number of the uses don't facilitate that. So that's where I just have a bit of hesitation. I'd love to see a proposal that really includes some portion of that. And then I think the last thing for me is a, is a no gas covenant on the whole thing, uh, climate crisis and yada, yada, yada. When I look at the currently proposed permitted uses, none of them require gas. Um, the restaurant is the only one where they sometimes ask for it, but it's actually not a requirement. And I think we'll see that shift over time. And so to build in that fossil fuel infrastructure for sixty years and a new development, uh, especially given the proposed permitted uses, it just doesn't make sense. And so for me, uh, my support, I'd want to see that, uh, no gas on the whole thing. Thanks.
Councillor French.
Uh, thanks, Chair. So I'm finding that, uh, this is a creative mixed use proposal for downtown. Uh, I think it's great that we're incorporating office, um, residential and commercial and that the housing mix, my comment just goes back to my question where I think I'd, I'd like to see at least one three-bedroom unit, uh, available to accommodate a low income family. And then whatever's left over out of the square footage made up in, um, one bedroom affordable units. Um, so this location is basically our equivalent of West Georgia and Granville. Because of that, I think that it wouldn't be unreasonable to expect some kind of public art component um, to potentially fit into the CAC package. Um, my feedback on parking is that the numbers just don't add up. And like, um, I calculate sixty-two parking spots and councillor Hamilton has done a double check with me in what we see in the package. And I don't see sixty-two as a number anywhere in, um, the proponent package or in the staff report. And then I just have one additional thought in looking really closely at, um, the architectural drawings with an eye on the parking, I discovered that the waste room is completely unworkable. There's a four cubic yard garbage bin shown in the residential portion of the waste room. And that bin is too big to get through the doorway that's shown. Just a random thought there. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Greenlaw.
Uh, yeah, I have a few comments, uh, about the proposed building. I'm, I'm disappointed about the quantity of three-bedroom units, uh, as that has been repeatedly demonstrated as a significant need in our community. I'd also like clarification on the, um, percentage of area wise of the below market portion. I would also echo councillor French in that I'd like to see more of these units as multiple bedrooms to accommodate families. Five hundred square feet is, is hard to live in. Um, I also have concerns with parking situation. Currently the site hosts, hosts about forty parking spots. That was my calculation as well. And to have that reduced to five spaces, which is one eighth of the stalls and a probable increase in the number of businesses occupying that site, thereby increasing the parking demand. Um, I see that as being problematic. And I, I agree in general with the principle of building fewer parking spots in an effort to have fewer vehicles. But the reality is that we're largely dependent on the province to bore our transit needs and, and we're just being left in a lurch in that situation where we're building for fewer cars without the infrastructure needed to support it. In that situation where we're building for fewer cars without the infrastructure needed to support it. Aesthetically. Not hugely moved by this building, especially as it will be a centerpiece in our downtown. And I would also echo Counselor Peddengill on the need for more bike, bike parking, charging for parking and a no gas covenant. I'm also, and I could be misinformed about this, I'm concerned about the suggested streetscape in these drawings. Because my understanding from cyclists is that. It, it feels more unsafe to have the, um, the streetscape jet, jutting in and out of, of the street. But, um, that's just a consideration for other people to look into for active transportation. Thanks.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. On the, um. Setback, um, supportive of the. The setbacks that are proposed, which is further back than currently zoned, but, uh. Further forward or smaller than our viewscapes, uh, would, would suggest. I think that the, the logic behind that of the additional building, the building that already exists there. Um, already blocking the views, I think that's sensible, so I'm in support of the setbacks proposed. Regarding the parking, uh, I don't agree, uh, with reducing the cash in lieu component. Before reducing the parking requirements. As pointed out by Counselor French, I see 11 parking stalls, um, in the, in the lane way there. So I don't see a reason to reduce the commercial parking requirements, uh, all the way to five. Um, and I don't see a reason to reduce the cash in lieu requirement, um, through variance. Regarding the indoor amenity space, uh, I think that they're requesting a very small change in the indoor amenity space. Compared to expectations, uh, and I think there is a fairly large outdoor amenity space there. So I would be, um, willing to accommodate the change in amenity space. Regarding the, one more thing. Um, uh, very supportive. The other things we haven't spoken about are the mid-block connection. Um, I hope that can be, uh, not just, uh, done, but done in a way that perhaps adds some kind of. Intention to having people walk there, mural, painting, some kind of decorative features as opposed to just a concrete block, um, alleyway. And, uh, definitely encouraging of the plaza space, um, that they're proposing right there in the corner. Thanks.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that Counselor French is, um, and is encouraging discussion of the unit mix topic. Uh, this first one I'll address here. I myself, I'm skeptical that this is the right place or a priority placed in the community for family units and three bedroom units. I think that this is what Squamish offers as. It, it has central city urban living. And I'm, I'm skeptical that this is where we would prior, be prioritizing that category of units. Although I'm of course sympathetic to the demand and interest in such units. With respect to the parking variance, I'll quote from the, uh, staff report, which cites the OCP 16.2D. Recognizing the functions that we assign to the downtown and they include. Street fronting, commercial and retail, personal services, commercial office and region serving offices, facilities and institutions. Commercial tourist accommodation, financial institutions. Folks, this creates commercial parking demand. There's no two ways about it. And this is, we value viewscapes, we value a number of things, but we value these functions of our downtown. And it comes with strings attached, parking, at least for the foreseeable future. So I am not in favor of the parking variance and in particular, the fee in lieu, uh, suggested for the commercial stalls. The eligibility for ca- cash in lieu. So I, whether it's building massing, uh, scenarios, I don't know. But I also have to point out that we have nearby. Two potential sites, district property, crown agency property for parcades in future. They're not very far away and I think we have to come to terms with our planning for downtown parking. That will include parcade scenarios or temporary parcade buildings, because that is also an option. I don't have a specific comments on the community amenity contribution, but I'd like to offer a couple of comments on a couple of other themes maybe related. Uh, mass timber advantages are referred to by the architect and that is quote to sequester carbon. And that is a project goal. I would like to suggest that another advantage, which we must consider. In mass timber, that is cross laminated timber, panel, floors, walls and ceilings. Is a quicker construction process. And I believe we need to start through our experience in the last few years. To encourage faster construction processes and off-site. Elements being delivered to the, to downtown sites is the way to go. So this might be highlighted as one of the advantages of panelized construction using cross laminated timber panels. And I'm, I know the architect is aware of this, but we're not seeing it highlighted here. And perhaps we should give additional attention ongoing to faster construction processes in the downtown. Next, I see that it, uh, in the highlighting of, um. Uh, our district priorities, uh, we have a number of things here and then among others. I suggest that in the downtown, another theme that we should be giving more attention to alongside viewscape considerations. Is architecture, architectonic quality. And here, I think that I, we know that this architect has delivered a number of outstanding projects. So we can look at it at the website of the firm, that's clear. But here, we're not actually highlighting it as a theme or a, a priority. And I think it should be, especially at this location. And I, and I know that staff could elaborate on the process from here as to addressing the qualities and approach taken. Uh, for the facade, but it does need some work. But I'd also like to mention that about three years ago, we had the, another project across the street, 38108 Cleveland come to council. And we did not like the facade and that was the main reason for sending them back. They were denying them where they wanted to go. And since then, that project has had a long and difficult journey. And, uh, we would want to avoid that, that journey being replicated with this project and, and the folks behind it. Uh, I have to, we have to, uh, do better at our, uh, also council on council's part. Where do we come in to make these suggestions to make for a, a better journey for these important downtown projects? Um, so I, I suggest that, um, the. Uh, viewscape protection is something that we have to prioritize, but I think there's other values in the urban environment of the downtown. That we should be more articulate about it as a, as in setting priorities. Finally, and this is also true, uh, going back several years, we are including during the rezoning that took place for this property. We don't have a downtown neighborhood plan. We tried in 2008, 2011, 2014, we just put it back on the shelf. And piecemeal, we've taken some of that, uh, the outcomes of those initiatives, but we never did complete it. And it sure would be valuable to have as we considered, who do we want as regards families, for example, living at this location? Or a priority on architecture? It is a shame that we do not have a downtown neighborhood plan. Although if we'd finished one in 2011 or so, we might not like it today. The world changes, but we don't have that overall view in setting priorities. So I'll leave my comments at that for, for now. Thank you.
Mayor Herford.
Thank you. Um. Overall, I think this is a really interesting project and I understand that our, the impacts of our, uh, our work to, or important work to preserve, uh, viewscapes have. Will have knock on effects. I found the way that the parking, we see the, the, um, the charts up on the screen now here. The way this was expressed was really, was really challenging. Um, a variance of 20 when, is how it's phrased, but really we're talking about a reduction of 10, which is still substantial. But how, uh, there's, there's a bit of a information packaging piece happening here. Um, I do find that number, uh, that 10 stall reduction, which is what we're talking about in practical senses. Fairly challenging. I do think, I wonder if in some of the draw, in the drawings, there's, uh. Accommodation for, uh, for loading and I wonder if there is opportunities to do. To do some on-street loading zone or something to help with this, um, be efficient with the overall loading and, and sort of operation of the, the general pre- precincts. And if that's a, a way to find another, uh, another spot or two inside the existing, the existing footprint. I've heard from some of my council colleagues that they're, that the math seems to be a little different. Maybe, maybe this isn't as, as much of a sticking point, uh, as we think it is, but I, I feel that, um. Uh, I, I think this is, is close. I'd like to see how close to that 15 number we could. We could get. I do think that overall, given that we're adding more, more businesses to the, uh, to the area and, um. The community has been used to the availability of those 40 spots. I think it's going to be, uh, wherever we land here is going to be extremely challenging, even if we were to hit the, that 15 that's laid out in the, in the C4 zoning. Um, but I, I wonder what can happen to get it, to get us clo- to get us closer. As far as the cash in lieu bit, um, I, I think we need to flush out the, the, the numbers there a little bit. I found it challenging as to when that, the, the buyouts introduced into the whole equation. Or whether we vary the amount they're allowed to buy out as a, as a way to, to offset, uh, or to justify the reduction. I think the, um. The amenity, uh, space, uh, I know that the, I'd like to just understand that, that we can, um, sort of what those requirements, um. Would be, uh, for the covered space outside and just make sure that we're. Really considering that, um, because the outdoor space needs to be functional. If we're going to accept a larger outdoor space for a, a reduced indoor space, which is essentially what we're being, we're being asked here. The, I was asking about the affordable housing, what percentage of the overall or what presented to the lift? And I, I think that just sort of flushing that out a little bit more is, is, would be helpful. Um, I do think it is, um, yeah, this is the most urban, uh, piece of, of our community and, um. Perhaps we keep the same amount of square, square footage and, and, and look at the, the unit, the unit types. But I think that, uh, I, I do think that's worth some, a little bit more exploration, whether we need to go all the way to. To, um, to a three bedroom or two bedroom, a little bit of variety there in that, in that space. And maybe carving that up in a different way that makes sense, I think would be, would be good. We've seen in our, in our, um, housing needs reports that there's a need, uh, for some of those larger units. However, um. I do find sometimes it's challenging to have one project address all the needs in the, in the community. So it might not make sense here, but, um, as long as this. Uh, that, uh, that footprint, uh, makes sense and I, I think it could be divided up a little bit, uh, a little bit differently. I'd be okay with that and I'm looking at it from a percentage of square footage or percentage of the lifts, uh, perspective, rather than the number of doors. Number of units, um. Peg loadings. Uh, I really, I really like the three block, uh, walkway. I think that really makes, um. Urban areas just far, far more functional when you can actually move, move around easily. And it, it brings things effectively closer if you can do these, um, mid-blocks. So I, I see a high value in that, um, so I, I want to make sure we hold on to that. I do think can, just operationally, um. The folks that want to be, uh, here in Squamish, whether they're in the affordable units or the market units, um. Have things and I don't know the storage piece. I, I see the class eight, the bike parking is there, but I just wonder if, as this goes forward, I'd like to see. We've seen in other developments, some creative, um, ways to ensure that there's these units. Or all units are functional from that perspective, but where did all the Squamish toys go? And, uh, just because it's the most urban of Squamish, we're still, uh. You know, across the street from somewhere you can put in your, your stand-up paddleboard and, and so on. So I think, um, some consideration of that or some articulation of what the, the vision is there to accommodate. The, uh, the residential storage would be, uh, would be helpful in the next, um, iteration. Yeah, I think that's, that's it for now.
Thank you. Uh, some comments of my own, um, appreciate that this is the first time this is coming to committee of the whole at the start of a rezoning process. So we are really focused on density and land use here. I've heard a lot of comments from my council colleagues around facades and building, uh. Like the look of the building and the feel of the building and I think a reminder that we'll get there. Um, we often don't have that information this early in the process. Um, and so this is really a gut check on whether the land use and the density is, is acceptable in terms of the rezoning that's being requested. Specifically with what we do have in front of us, I do really appreciate the increased ceiling heights that the proponent has provided. I think that will provide for more functional space, especially in the employment area. The 35% employment space goes above what we're target for 30% uh, in our policies, which I think will be well, uh, well positioned in this particular area of downtown. As well as the public plaza and the increased, uh, upper story setbacks and in an effort to try and reach our viewscapes, our new viewscape standards. On the components that staff have requested feedback on, I think the community contribution offer is fair for the most part. The, if, if I look at it as a square footage of the affordable housing contribution for the land lift, it is substantive. I also would like to see a diversity in those affordable units. So I'm happy with the offer in terms of the square footage, but I am not as content with the makeup of those units. So if there's any flexibility there to get a diversity of units, especially on the affordable housing piece, uh, I think that that is really critical going forward. More broadly on the proposed unit mix, I also think it's unfortunate that it's falling behind our 20% policy for three bedrooms. Um, and even more so because it's only 9% two bedrooms. So I would be okay if there were more two bedrooms to be a little bit more lenient on the three bedroom piece. But those like more family style units, I think need to be increased, um, in this particular proposal. With regards to the parking variance, I think that we need to do it in the opposite direction. So buy out all the cash in lieu parking stalls that are available and then ask for a variance. I'm not willing to entertain a reduction on that cash in lieu, like that's allowable by bylaw. Um, so I think you can start there and then you can work your way backwards. I would entertain a parking variance beyond that. Um, if some of the following, not necessarily all of them, were to come forward. So increase public bike parking, uh, increase commercial bike parking and bike parking facilities, um, so. Uh, like end of, end of trip facilities, uh, car share, bike share, um, those sorts of things being discussed. Uh, I think, uh, would be well welcomed and a more defensible approach to trying to secure a parking variance. I still am challenged by the fact that the set, I appreciate the setbacks are providing hardship in some way. But if you have. Smaller setbacks, you have more ability to build gross floor area, which means. Unless you're putting it towards residential, if you're putting it towards employment, you need more parking spaces. And so to me, the setbacks aren't necessarily creating the hardship on the parking variance here. It is just the makeup of the building, um, and that might be the ink, the ask or the increase in the employment space is what's driving that. And if that's the rationale, then I think it'd be helpful to have that come back in a clearer fashion. Um, support my council's colleagues request for a no gas, no gas covenant on the whole building. And I also just want to note that in the drawings for the view analysis comparison. Of the proposed zoning is a little bit skewed because the other two scenarios don't show the full build out on all corners. But the proposed zoning for this particular project has like the build out of this one building and then leaves all the other corners unbuilt. So it's just a little bit of a skewed perspective and so it'd be helpful if they could come back and provide clarity across all three of those proposals. Or as they're presented within, uh, within the document. And, uh, those were all my comments. Anything further, Counselor Peddengill?
Yeah, I just thought it's worth adding a piece of clarification from my perspective. I, I mentioned some sort of community gathering space in terms of like a coffee shop or something. Uh, I just want to be clear, that's not necessarily a go, no-go for me on this development. I think if, if the, if the proposal comes forward and, you know, that's something I can offer, that may offset some of our concerns about parking and so on. Uh, but more broadly, whether it's here or somewhere else, I do want to understand. How we are ensuring that somewhere on our high street and, you know, if there's a way to resolve that here, great. But sort of having that context, I think that's a piece that we need to be thinking about. So I just wanted to sort of add some context of the, the level of, I guess, focus I have on that particular item with this development.
We are still considering or, or in the midst of considering a review for our C4 zoning. Has that been completed? So there is a motion on the floor, but I just think that that's maybe a better area to have that conversation more broadly in the downtown core is how we actually. What uses we allow in that C4 zoning, what that looks like going forward. With that, I will call the question, uh. Uh, we didn't actually put a motion on the floor. We just did comments first. Uh, so there is staff. Is there any clarity that you would like from the comments that were made? the comments that were made today?
Through the chair, no.
Wonderful. We do have a motion in our agenda, moved by Mayor Herrford, seconded by Counselor French. Any further comments?
Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
And with that, we have a motion to terminate. Moved by Mayor Herrford, seconded by Counselor French. All in favor? Motion?